There we go. As everybody just heard, this meeting is being recorded. So it will be posted on the town website for future consumption for those who aren't able to join us or for those who want to re-watch. You'll also notice that we have a live transcript on for those who may be hard of hearing or wish to follow along with subtitles. There is a hide subtitle option for those that it's distracting for. So if you just push that button. We are going to open the meeting with public comment period. And there will be periodic opportunities throughout the meeting where participants can make comments. You can notice that you'd like to make a comment one of two ways. One is that you can use the raise hand function on Zoom. And the other is that we have a chat that is set up to go directly to myself. So if you send me a message in the chat, you can also let me know that you wish to speak. If for whatever reason, this meeting gets interrupted and we're not able to continue, I will send out a message on the town email blast for ways that a new login so that we can restart the meeting and productively continue on. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you. And I also want to remind everyone that we request that you please block your video until you are participating in the meeting. That is something that has been requested by our residents because they find it to be a distraction. So thank you very much. And with that, we will start with the public comment period. If you wish to make a comment, please raise your hand or indicate to the town manager. And again, if you're not participating in the agenda item, please block your video. Thank you.
We do have one comment so far. Mr. Phil Young has requested a comment.
Sure.
Okay, can you hear me now then?
Yes, sir.
All right. I just wanted to make a comment as a resident now, not as chairman of the budget committee. Let me start by saying that I'm in favor of stormwater management. But we have to recognize that town resources are limited. So it's important to get the most bang.
So Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Are you making a comment about the budget item?
I'm making a comment about the budget item that's coming up later in the meeting, but as a resident.
Are you going to be, will you be able to be here then?
Oh, yeah, I will.
Because I think it would be beneficial if you made your comment during the hearing on the budget. So that those that are going to just watch on the budget will hear your comment.
I'm happy to do that.
If you don't mind.
I was doing it because I felt as chairman of the budget committee, I shouldn't express any.
I understand. I understand that and I respect your decision to do that. But it would be, I think it would be more powerful if you made the comment during the hearing and you could say in what role you're making it. Because there might be others that are only attending at that time.
That's fine with me. At your discretion.
I encourage you to make the comment during the budget hearing. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's perfectly okay with me. And with your permission, I'm happy to do that.
Well, you don't really need my permission, but I just think it'd be more impactful if you made the comment then.
I just wanted to follow the usual protocols since.
I understand. I understand. I'm just making a suggestion.
No, that's great. That's fine. I'll hold off until then.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there, Mr. Town Manager, has anyone else indicated they wish to speak?
No other comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. The next item is the approval of the agenda as published. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion to approve.
I see President Circo and I see a second by Councilmember Heller. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? I see a unanimous vote. Thank you. The next item is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? I saw Councilmember Barr. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Now we will move to the next item, which is the building permit application submitted by Alan Kaplan, 4808 Cumberland Avenue. So we will begin. Today is May 2, 2022. This is a hearing before the Town of Somerset Council for application 2205-1 to consider a building permit application submitted by Alan Kaplan for the property located at 4808 Cumberland Avenue. This hearing is being audio recorded. We ask that all speakers speak one at a time, addressing the council when called upon, and to state their name and address for the record before making public comment. The hearing will observe the following order. First, the Somerset Town staff will present their findings and submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Next, the applicant will present their application. Third, the Somerset Town Council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant, staff, or other interested parties relevant to the application at hand. Next, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. Next, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony, after which the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record closed. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact, and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permit decision. The town attorney will be asked to write a decision, and the town manager will be asked to issue a permit with the conditions voted on by the council and enumerated in the town attorney's decision. We now begin the hearing with the presentation of the staff finding and report, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The applicant submitted an application to us at the end of March, actually. We've gone back and forth with them relatively straightforward. So I'll turn it over to Doug in short order, other than to say that after review, the staff has concluded that the application fully complies with the town code and we recommend approval of the permit application. And Doug, I will hand it over to you.
Right. Good evening. The homeowners applied for a building permit to make improvements to the rear of the existing house. No work is proposed in the front of the house, so an established building line analysis is not required. The HBC approved the improvements in April of 2021, and Montgomery County approved the building permit plans on February 9, 2022. The plan is proposed to remove an existing deck and close a 14 by 12 foot screened porch and a deck in a patio. The area of the lot is 7,800 square feet. Proposed building coverage will be 2,024 square feet or 24% of the lot. The application included a boundary survey and a parking plan for three vehicles to be parked on Cumberland Avenue. Boundary survey indicated the existing house and the proposed screened porch will be located eight feet from the left side property line. Right side of the existing house is located 15 feet from the right side property line. Proposed screened porch will be located a minimum of 20 feet from the rear property line. All proposed setbacks meet the minimum setbacks in the town code. The plan proposes to have a temporary dumpster and a toilet located at the rear of the lot. And since the plan does not disturb more than 400 square feet, the county did not require a sediment control plan or drainage plan. I recommend the council approve the applicant's demolition, building permit, and dumpster permit and require a wall check survey after the addition is in place. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Does that, that concludes the staff report, correct?
The only other thing, the town arborist hasn't joined us quite yet. The applicant does not have any tree removals that are associated with this work. Dr. Feather just recommended that some protection go around the trees in the neighbor's yard, just to be extra cautious, but no tree removals or tree work associated with the work.
So, and is Dr. Feather going to be joining for the hearing?
I believe that he will be joining us tonight, but he's not here quite yet. He did submit a tree protection plan for those two trees in the neighbor's yard, just to include some protective fencing around them.
Okay, thanks. We'll see if anyone has a question to him and we can proceed then. Okay, Mr. Kaplan, thank you. Could you please identify yourself and your team? And you don't necessarily have to present the whole application. You can highlight it or just comment on the report, whichever works for you. Thank you for being here.
Sure, I'll make it pretty easy because it sounds like there weren't any significant issues. So Alan Kaplan, owner and resident at 4808 Cumberland. Also on the call is Matt McDonald, who's the architect who prepared the plans. That's all I got.
Thank you. Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
Yes, please. Thank you. I'm trying to understand what the, what is being proposed to the side of the screened porch that's inside the eight-foot minimum side yard setback? Are those steps?
Yeah, they're steps that lead from, like, they're basically egress from the screened-in porch down to the side. Yep.
I guess this question is for our town lawyer. Do those steps count as something that protrudes from the house that would require a variance that protrudes into the setback?
So, yes, it would. See, open steps are allowed to project nine feet into a front setback, but not into a rear or side setback. Let me double check that. Are those new steps or existing steps? I'm sorry, are they, yeah, those proposed or existing?
I believe they're new.
Yeah. They're proposed to be new and I hope that this doesn't derail anything, but we actually decided to not include them in the final build because we had submitted this so long ago. And in the end, there actually, there won't be an egress there. So it's, I don't want to waste everybody's time by trying to answer that question. If there needs to be like an amendment or something like that, we can submit that, but.
I think that will solve the issue.
That, yes, that does. So.
We'll just make that as we consider it, we can state that verbally.
Yeah. Is there a version of the site plan that does not show those steps?
No, but we can issue one tomorrow.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Barr. Do you have any questions?
Is the patio shown in the plans currently existing or is that a new patio that you're putting in?
Yeah, there's a patio. It's just currently underneath a deck. And so the deck that overlies that patio is going to be taken down.
Okay, and so you're building a patio now to the side of it? Is that right?
Yeah, it's basically just replacing, there's currently brick down there underneath the deck. And so it's just switching out the brick for some porous papers.
Okay, thank you.
That's all the question I had.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Heller.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
So at this, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember Kumar.
No questions from me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated they wish to comment or ask questions on this application?
No, not at this time, and no submitted comments.
Okay, thank you. So then there would be no reason for rebuttal with that, unless you have, Mr. Kaplan, unless you have something you wanted to rebut that a council member has.
No, thank you.
So with that, I will turn it over to the council president to, this closes the public comment part of the hearing. And now I will turn it over to the council president to deliberate and come up with a decision.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I guess for my fellow council members, I was concerned about the steps to the side of the screened porch at existing deck, the new steps in the drawing that would have extended into the setback and would have required a variance. But as that is actually no longer part of the applicant's plan or vision, I'm happy with moving forward with this. Let's just go around and look forward to your comments and thoughts. Robin?
I have no concerns with this one.
Okay, Debbie?
No concerns. Thank you.
Kumar?
No concerns. Miami.
Okay. Then I think we're set. And what I propose is that we approve the building permit application submitted by Alan Kaplan for the construction of a rear addition, an enclosure of rear screened porch at the property located at 4808 Cumberland Avenue with the removal of or without a egress steps on the side of the screened porch.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes, thank you.
Sure. The building permit administrator has recommended a wall check survey. That could be a condition of approval as well. And I would suggest a condition that the applicant submit a revised site plan with the stairs removed, because it's nice to have a compliance site plan in the record if any issues come up after permitting.
Thank you very much for your recommendations. I accept both of them.
And I'd also add the tree protection plan for the neighbor's two trees to the motion.
Okay. Oh, right, that is part of it, yes.
Okay, so you're adding that as the motion?
Should I restate the motion just to?
Yes, please do. And then we'll have the town attorney rule that's legally and technically sufficient. So please.
To approve a building permit application for the construction of a rear addition, an enclosure of rear screened porch at the property located at 4808 Cumberland Avenue with a wall check without any egress steps on the side of the existing deck extending into the setback and with the provision of new site plans that show no such steps.
Okay, is that legally and technically sufficient?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was making notes. Mr. President, did you also mention the tree protection plan?
Oh, I forgot the plus tree protection plan. Thank you.
Recommended by the town arborist. Thank you.
So now it's, and does Councilmember Barr wish to second that?
I'll second that now, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
The architect has a.
Wait, there's no discussion with the architect. Is there? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed. Thank you very much. We will now move to the next item, which is the consider approval of a variance application submitted by Daniel Bremer-Wortig and Rebecca LaMardrid for the construction of a second story addition to the existing house on the property located at 5613 Warwick Place. The applicants are requesting five variances from the town code regarding side yard setbacks. So we will begin now. Today is May 2, 2022. This is a here for the Town of Somerset Council for variance application 2205-2 to consider five variances from the setback requirements of the Somerset Town Code for the property located at 5613 Warwick Place, which will be enumerated by the town manager. The applicants, Daniel Bremer-Wortig and Rebecca LaMardrid, I hope I pronounced that right, are also represented by Edwin and Dino of Four Brothers Design Plus Build Incorporated. The hearing is being audio recorded. We ask that all speakers speak one at a time, addressing the council when called upon, and to state their name and address for the record before making public comment. The hearing will observe the following order. First, the Somerset Town staff will present their findings and submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Next, the applicant will present their application. Next, following that, the Somerset Town Council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant, staff, or other interested parties relevant to the application at hand. Following that, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. Next, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony, after which the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record closed. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a variance decision. The town attorney will be asked to write a decision, and the town manager will be asked to issue a permit with the conditions voted on by the council and enumerated in the town attorney's decision. We now begin the hearing with the presentation of the Somerset staff findings and reports. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, the applicants are seeking five variances from the town code. They're not seeking a town permit yet. They are just requesting a ruling on their variance requests before they go through the process of submitting an application through Montgomery County. So they would then have to come back to the town council for a permit once they've received the Montgomery County approval. The applicant, I just wanted to clarify that the applicant did write that they're seeking four variants, but when we were reviewing the code, we found that it's actually five variances, although practically it's more or less the same. And it's unchanged than what the applicant is presenting. It's just more technicality than anything else. So to explain it, the town code requires that buildings must be set at least eight feet away from the side property line. And on both sides of the existing house, it's what's called existing non-conforming, meaning it was built closer than what the code currently allows. Probably built before the town had a town code relating to setbacks. And so the applicants are requesting to build up from the existing building line. So variance one is on the left side of the property where the house is currently 7.12 feet from the left property line. So therefore, the applicant is seeking a 0.88-foot variance. So that's the difference between the eight-foot setback and the 7.12 feet from the side yard setback that they would like to build up. Variance two, very similar, but on the right side of the property. And the house is 7.46 feet from the right property line. So the applicant is seeking a 0.56-foot variance, which again is the difference between the eight-feet setback and the 7.46 feet from the side yard that the house currently is on that they would wish to build up on. Variance three is also on the right side of the property where the applicant currently has a porch in their front yard, and they are requesting to enclose that front porch. And so that'll be in line with the existing first-story right property, right house side. So therefore, the applicant's seeking a 0.56-foot variance. Again, that's the difference between eight feet and the 7.46 feet from the side yard setback for the first story on the right side. So that's the second story on the left side, second story on the right side, first story on the right side. Variance number four, it has to do with the town code requirement that the sides of the building must be a combined 18 feet from the two property lines. So on the one side, it's 7.12 feet. On the other side, it's 7.46 feet. So therefore, that's a total of 14.58 feet. So the applicant is requesting a 3.42-foot variance. That's the difference between 18 feet and the sum on the two sides for the combined side setbacks. And then finally, the town code does not allow exceptions for encroachments into the front setback, also known as the established building line. And the established building line for this property is 28.75 feet. In other words, the house and its pertinent structures can't be closer to the front property line than 28.75 feet. And the applicant has requested to put in a decorative pergola that extends from the end of the eve for the front of the house that extends to 23.25 feet from the front property line. So therefore, they're requesting a 5.5-foot variance for the front setback for that pergola, which is again the difference between 28.75 feet and the 23.25 feet.
Yeah.
The applicant shared plans with neighbors in March of 2022, and the town sent an email to abutting property owners to clarify the variances that were being sought, but noting that plans themselves had not changed. As of today, I can update, no residents submitted comments either in favor or in opposition to the requested variances. In my memo to the council, I laid out the factors for the council to consider when considering a variance. It is there for you to review, so I won't, I won't repeat that as necessary, just to be timely. But with that said, I will turn it over to our town building administrator if he has anything to add at this time.
Yeah, I have nothing to add to that comment.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, does that conclude the report?
That concludes the report. We don't have any tree reports because as I mentioned, they're not seeking a permit at this time. They're just seeking a ruling on the variances that are requested. But I will note that the town arborist has looked at it and has, that there's no trees that are impacted by any of the variances.
But I see he's here now in case anyone has a question. So thank you. So Mr. Bremer-Wortig, I hope I pronounced that right. And Ms. LaMardrid, now is your opportunity to present your application. And could you also introduce any of your part of your team or your.
Absolutely.
Here tonight.
Absolutely. Well, thank, we thank the council and you, Mayor, for allowing us to submit this permit for your consideration. My name is Daniel Bremer, and my wife Rebecca, we are owners and residents at Somerset. And this is also our first time exercising in American democracy at a town council. So this is new and interesting for us. We're very excited. We're very excited about this project. When we first moved here in twenty eighteen, we moved in, I think, a day before the pool party. And we went to the pool party, and everybody's question to us was, are you going to tear the house down? And we said, no, we love it. And so we hope that as you are considering these plans, you, you see that we are trying to expand on, on the current footprint for our family and needs that have expanded with pandemic and other, other reasons. And but, but still keeping with, with the original feel and look of, of the town and of the house itself. So we hope that you will consider that as you deliberate on this permit, on this variance permit and, and future permits that we will be submitting as, as we are able. You want to say something?
Um, I think it's important also to introduce our team. That is Four Brother, Four Brothers Design and Builder, they're architects and builders as well. And we have with us Sonda and Edwin. And anything else?
You, you will be seeing them throughout this project, and we've been working with them for a little bit over a year and are very excited about where, where we are in that this is finally taking a little bit more traction. And looking forward to your questions and comments.
Okay, tha- thank you so very much. Council President Circa, do you have any questions?
Just please. Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. I, I appreciate the applicant's desire to work with, work with the original footprint of the house. But that said, I have some concerns regarding the dimensions of the house. And in the write-up, let me try and, in, in the, or the application, sorry. Got too many documents open, various description. Right. I guess the, the question is, Somerset has well before any of the current council members joined the council, Somerset adopted a code that does not grandfather existing footprints. If there is a vertical extension like the county does. So presumably, the council at that time thought that or understood that any houses that would be confronted by that issue would have to sort of step in the second edition. So what, what makes, I guess, your property or your design different from what would have been considered by the council in the past? Are there unique attributes of your property, the shape of the property, or trees that you're trying to avoid impacting? I'm just trying to understand. Aside from the impact of cost, which I, I can appreciate, having done an expansion or renovation ourselves, aside from cost, is, is there a reason not to bring, to narrow the, or shorten the second deck? And welcome your input.
Absolutely. So I, I will defer to, to the experts who are the, the experts in the room who are working on this design. But I'll say that there are, since we moved, there are clear signs of settlement. This is one of the older houses that have been in that, and in, in Somerset. So there, there are some technical points there that Four Brothers team can answer for you.
Okay, thank you. I look forward to hearing that.
Hi, good evening. Hi, good evening. My name is Sandra Zabrowski. I'm an architect and a team lead for this project with Four Brothers. And then, and also
I don't know, you know, designer here for Brothers. So we had submitted the letters. I'm not sure if you guys had a chance to review the exhibits. In the package, then the package we mentioned, I'm just going to summarize some of the bullet points that we mentioned there. It's fifty-six thirteen Warwick Place, R sixty zone, Montgomery County. At the time it was built, it was allowed, they built seven-foot side setbacks, and this was updated to an eight-foot setback and an eighteen-foot sum for all setbacks, which makes the existing footprint non-conforming. So it's conforming when it was built, but it's not conforming once the code was changed. Montgomery County did provide that exception when we're aware that there's, it's not grandfathered in the town of Somerset. But we're just requesting the same relief from the town of Somerset that is allowed with the, with in Montgomery County. And also in that variance letter, we also mentioned that the strength of application of the code would create unusual practical difficulties for the quality reasons. The first one being an inability to have the new load bearing walls aligned with the existing structural foundational walls. The second would be a job in the exterior walls would create complex load on the existing foundation and would create all the stormwater issues. It would exacerbate those, it just made them worse. And then also the peculiar design that both these sense, it would create an asymmetrical side and it would create weird little jobs and bump outs that would be somewhat unsightly from the, the street.
Okay, thank you. I, I read all that. I guess my question was, that would be the anticipated result of the legislation that the, that the town enacted years ago? So what is the special, what makes this property special that a various should be given?
So I think here in this, what, what's a little bit unique about Daniel and Rebecca's situation is actually the, the rear of their home has the masonry wall of their rear home has significant cracking, not only from settlement, but from the erosion of their back wall. And so right now, as if, if we were to proceed with just repairing, if we were, if we were to just repair what was there and then, and, and, or not even, if we were to keep going with what we had and step in the second floor, I think it would create, I think it would create a significantly more expensive and complicated structural package than just building a straightforward addition. So I think essentially the, the erosion of the existing soil conditions and then also not only the erosion, but our soils engineers would have said the house was built on a culvert or a an existing stream on the left side of the house. And then there's also some, we're seeing some of that evidence on the right side of the house as well. So I think all of that is going to have to be investigated and propped up. So, so I think right now is, in summary, there is a really, it's an abnormally complicated house to begin with to add an addition. And I think stepping it back in as adding an added layer that I think is unnecessary.
Okay. Thank you very much. I don't have any other questions at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Barr.
Yeah, I, not so much questions as comments, really. A lot of our homes were built in the nineteen fifties under the county code, which is a seven-foot side setback. And it was subsequent to all of that building that the town developed its own setback standards. I think that when owners decide to work within the existing home to build up, it's something we should consider for good, solid environmental reasons that there's a lot left, less resource needed to build up an existing home than there is to tear down a home and build a completely new home. And for that reason, I think we should consider these variances in a positive light.
Councilor Barr, I think that is for discussion later. Did you have any questions of the
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Heller, do you have any questions?
I, I am, I too appreciate that you're trying to keep the character of the house and not tear it down and build a McMansion. I, I do appreciate that, but I, I do have a couple of questions. One is, you know, on both your left and right sides of the house, that's pretty narrow. It's a narrow space, and that's because your house is non-conforming from built in the fifties. Okay? So one of the things that concerned me was on the left side of your house, you have your air conditioning. Is that, is that called a condenser, that unit out there? Somebody help me here who's better at this than I am. Um, I guess that's the air conditioner that's on the left side of the house.
Let's call it the air conditioning unit. Yes.
Thank you. And if you, if you are, are going, you know, you're taking up more space, that unit has to move further over to, towards the fence. Am I right about that?
No, we're not taking up more space. We're essentially going up on the existing footprint. So at the ground level, it wouldn't go out in any directions inside.
Okay, then I misunderstood that. I'm sorry. That's good to hear. Um, the other thing was the, the pergola, or is that, isn't that more of a front porch, a pergola?
It's not a front porch because it doesn't have a floor structure. It's just for shade. It's just a, just for decorative purposes.
And then, and you want that to come out, what, five feet? By that
It extends five feet into the established building line, but it's technically not five feet. I would say it's like thirty inches roughly. It's just five feet, five foot six inches into the established building line.
Essentially a trellis for plants, really, is what it's
Okay, I can't visualize it, so that's why I ask.
If I may, Debbie, I might be able to jump in to help, help you visualize because our, the, the one front setback that our town code does allow is eaves. And so you think about where their porch has a two-foot eve, and then they have a trellis that extends beyond that eve. And so that's why it's the fi- the five-plus feet, it's really about a three-foot structure on top of the two-foot eve that is allowed. Does that, maybe that helps?
It helps somewhat. But how does that, Matt, compare with the other houses on the block? That's the only thing I can do that have their front porches. You know, um, are they within the same, you know, uh, you know, amount of space? I know I'm not making very good sense here, but I think I will come back to this later. I think this is more of a discussion item. My last question is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but was there somewhere in your application, you talked about having a generator? Did I read that in somebody else's house?
No, it's not our application.
Not your house? Good. All right. Then I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Kumar.
Thank you. I have a few questions. The first is just a clarification that you're largely staying within the current footprint of the house. My understanding is you're building up, and in the process of building up, you're moving a little bit out on the right and a little bit out on the left. And that's what's resulted in the, in the variance. Is that a correct interpretation?
Uh, we're going directly
Yes, someone is shaking though, so.
We're going directly up on the existing footprint, so.
So, sorry, I just jumped in. So we're, we're going up on, on the footprint, especially in, in the rear. And then, um, right now, we're taking, right now, there's an existing carport that's not really functional for, you know, a, a family car today. So we're, we're enclosing half of that on the front. So that is technically within the existing footprint, but it's, we're just enclosing that space.
So the, the, the new proposed walls aren't going any closer to the side lot lines than they currently are. They're going up, but since the existing walls are roughly seven feet away from the side lot lines, then we need a variance for those because they're not conforming. Existing non-conforming is a term that was used at the final
Yeah, so you're overwhelmingly within the existing footprint, and the non-conforming is less than a foot.
Exactly.
Only each side. Okay, in about roughly half feet across the board. And that's, and that's the second question I had, Matt. The fourth variance is really the sum total of these individual side variances.
Exactly. Yes, that's right. Yeah.
And then I had another question for you, Matt, which is that you note, you noted in our packet that no one has commented on either obstruction in terms of, you know, any interference with light and air between this structure and neighboring structures. No one has commented that this would in unreasonably adversely affect the use and enjoyment or value of their property. Is that correct?
That's right. No, no, no comments regarding the, the proposed building structure.
Great. And then lastly, I had a question about the pergola. And so I, I, I know what those are. I just wanted to confirm that it's largely open air. So it's basically these four pillars and then these beams up top. And it's to kind of be this scaffolding, holding. I heard someone say for a vine or some sort of a plant structure. Is that right?
Correct. It's, it's more for a landscaping feature, so it's not intended to sit underneath or have any sort of living space. It's literally just for plants to add, to enhance the, the front facade.
Okay, and I, I, I know the property, and I, you know, I've walked, I've walked by it a number of times. I think there's already, that's what you're talking about, the easement, or the eve, sorry, the eve that is pre-existing. So you're just extending out from there with this pergola. Is that correct? Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. We will now open the floor for a public comment on this application. And if you, any resident or guest wishes to comment or ask a question, if you could please indicate in the chat to the town manager. And the town manager will call on you. No one's indicated.
Uh, we do have one, one, uh, one resident who's indicated that they would like to ask a question. Is it Tam, Tamara or?
Tamara, yeah, yeah.
Tell us your name and your street, please.
Yes, Tamara Gould, five-six-one-five Warwick. So we are the neighbors adjacent, I think, to the left is how you would see it. And we're supportive, you know, we, you know, we love these four houses. We purchased our house just this summer, so we're new to this process and to the neighborhood and are really happy that, that Daniel and Rebecca are keeping the character of, of these houses, which I understand were all built by the same architect at the same ti- in the same period. So keeping the, sort of the style of the houses is really wonderful because it's, you know, part of what makes this, this part of the neighborhood so special. I think, you know, the questions that we had asked to, to Daniel or Rebecca are the same ones I have, which are just about, you know, we are really interested in getting solar panels and just will the height of the next level interfere with the sun? And this is something, I think, just for the architect, nothing for us to block, just something we want to know about, you know, addressing, and also how the light will have come in, you know, from the back windows, which again, all of these houses have those unique back windows which look out on the woods. Just making sure that the height won't interfere with light coming in to the back. And so those were our main kind of questions, but and our neighbors won over who I think don't need to be notified officially because they're not adjacent to the house, but Frank, Joseph, and Carol Jenkins, who I believe went through this process with their house, they also expressed interest Daniel and Rebecca, and just walking it through with you and the architects, just to understand kind of, you know, also because they went through a similar process, what they learned. And so they would welcome the opportunity to just interface with you guys about, about the plans. And that's all. Those are really my
Thank you and welcome to Somerset. Do, do, do you wish to answer the questions?
Um, hi, Tamara. Um, it's nice to meet you. Or, I'm sorry, just to clarify, are you on, if you're looking at the house and you're back to the street, you're on the left side?
Exactly. Facing the house, we're to the left. Exactly.
Great. So I actually did a, a little, I did a solar study addressing this exact question. And from, from my findings is that, and I can share these with you too, so you can sort of see. So right now, the, at the worst, at the So right now, the, at the worst, at the, at the lowest angle or the, the worst shadow that would be casting on your home, um, there's a portion right now that, uh, it's kind of clipping, um, the, like a, a right side, kind of closer to your driveway area. So, um, that is, that would, at the, at the, at the lowest angle, the, um, that clipping of the shadow would only increase by a couple of feet or so. Um, and the rest of the year, it really doesn't impact your space. But what currently does impact your, um, would, would impact your, uh, solar panels are the existing trees, um, much more than, than the home. But I, I'd be happy to, to, to show you, um, where exactly that would fall and where it falls now. Um, and or just any other questions you or any other neighbors would have.
Wonderful. That would be great. Thank you so much.
Thanks for the heads up about the, the neighbors one down, Tamara.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, is any other resident or guests?
Uh, yes, one, one other, uh, resident, um. Laura, I don't have a last name, so if you could introduce yourself, that would be great.
Hi, it's Laura Levine. You guys know me. I just want to say that our opinion about variances is that they are, they should be narrowly construed, that they're there for a reason because the zoning rules are supposed to be followed. And one of the things that's going on in Somerset that's got a lot of people upset is these big, big houses that are tight. They're too close to their two.
Kenyans.
They're using up too much of the lot. They're too close to the neighbors. They're too high. And so it, the, the council is supposed to really be careful before they grant these, even when neighbors aren't objecting, because some neighbors don't get around to saying something or they don't feel comfortable saying something. But, you know, the scale, the existing house is just one story high. But when you go to that second story and you exceed the, the setback that much higher, that's a big change. And it may, it may look too tight. I mean, I don't know, but I would just urge this council to be very careful. Uh, because it seems to me in reading the, in reading the rules, that variances should really only be granted where there's some extraordinary need for them. And I don't see that here.
Okay, thank you. Does the, does the applicant wish to respond?
Absolutely. And so I, I will just say very bluntly that we have, uh, invested a considerable amount of money in studying this case, uh, to make sure that we are able to keep the construction for the look and feel of the town. And it does come at our expense. And it would be very easy to, it would be easier and cheaper to, to tear down a house and build a new one within the new variances. And the obstruction would be approximately about the same. So I take your point, but just know that the, as owners and, uh, pro- proponents of this project, we are investing a tremendous amount of our money in making sure that we're studying this and, uh, and doing this appropriately eh, so that we can keep the look and feel of the house and the neighborhood.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just, um, make a comment also, uh, related, uh, answering, um, Ms. Levine's comment. Um, I, I did note for the council that when considering a, a variance, the town code lists a couple of factors to consider. Um, it's either not both, but either the strict and literal application of, of the code would result in peculiar or unusual practical difficulties because of shallowness, shape, et cetera of the property. Or the proposed construction would not significantly interfere with light and air between residences or other structures. Would not be incompatible with scale, massing and character of the town or nearby residences. And would otherwise not, um, adversely adversely affect the use enjoyment or value of nearby properties.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, did anyone else wish to have, ask a question?
Really sharp.
I, I, it looks like Ms. Levine wanted to make a second comment.
Yes, I did. I just wanted to respond to what you just said because we looked at the, the provision carefully in the, the following provision, which talks about the minimally reasonably necessary applies to both A and B, in our opinion. So regardless of whether you're going on that A or that B, it's got to be the minimum reasonably necessary. Now, the council may find that this is.
Okay, Ms. Levine, that, if you could, this is not a debate. If you have further comments on the application, we will take them now. Otherwise, we have to move on.
I, I, that's fine. I wanted to make my comments.
Yes, but do you have further comments on the application? Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has anyone else indicated they wish to speak?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. This concludes the public portion of the hearing. The record is now closed. The council may now discuss and deliberate on the findings of fact and conclusions of law and may vote on the application. And then we'll turn it over to the council president to lead the deliberation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and appreciate the applicant's, uh, application. Um, for the council, this is, I find this a challenging application. But also, and I think there's also an opportunity here. So not sure if I heard you correctly, Kabir, talking about the dimensions and then the sum of the dimensions and issues. Like to clarify, at least my understanding is that if we look at, if you're looking at the house from the front, sorry. The left side of the house is 7.2 feet from the, uh, the property line, which places it inside an eight-foot required setback. And the right side is 7.5 feet from the right side property line, placing it half a foot within the required eight-foot setback. But you don't just add up those two because there is another requirement, county and, and Somerset, that requires the total setback provided by the house, the 18 feet. So, so the exception that we're looking at or is being requested for a variance is more than the sum of a point eight plus point five. It's like three and a half feet or four feet. Just want to clarify that.
I, I understood. Can I?
Oh, okay. Good, good.
Or, or can we, my turn?
Okay, um. My thoughts are, um, I greatly appreciate, uh, homeowners working within the footprint of an existing house. And, uh, to the extent that I have any aesthetics, which can be debatable, I think that this design is a nice job of working with the 1950s style and fits in with the Somerset character. That said, I'm, I'm very concerned about extending a vertical structure that so significantly impacts the setback requirements, especially for the total setback. So if, if I would be much more receptive to a design proposal that say went straight up on the left side and violated the left side a little bit, but maybe the right side was built over the carport structure, the inside of the carport structure, so it had the structural strength to be 10 feet more in. So there'd be a little less house, but we would not violate the right side setback at all. And we would not violate the total setback requirements. Just giving some thoughts here. And, and my understanding is that this is just a request on the variance, not actually the request. This is not the actual bur- building permit application, so we can provide feedback to the applicants. With that, let's go around. Robin?
Yeah, I, I think that we need to rethink our code a little bit, frankly. When, when the, uh, town set its own setback regulations, there was no concern at that time about sustainability, about climate change, nothing about that. Now there's great concern about those issues. And one of the factors that we have to take into account is the huge number of resources required to build a large new home. And so we really need to think about some kind of incentives that encourage people to stay within the structure that they have. And, and in that respect, also the existing character of the immediate neighborhood of the homes around them. And for that reason, um, I see it as perfectly acceptable to build upon the existing structure without interfering anymore, um, with neighbors, no, getting no closure to neighbors than the house currently is. Um, the only variance then that is exceptional is the, for the pergola. I really do see that as landscaping rather than adding to the mass of the house. And so I do believe that it qualifies under the, um, enjoyment standard for variance and, and we'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Cast Robin a question? Robin, are you saying then that those other variances shouldn't be allowed? Is that what you just said?
No, what I'm saying is we, I think we need to rethink our code. They, they are necessarily variances at the moment, but as I said, when that code was originally drafted, no thought was given to the difference between building up, uh, an existing house and knocking down a house and building a new one. But that is a very significant difference in the world of today because of the resources involved in, in constructing that new home. So we really should give advantage to people who are intending to retain the original structure and build up from it. And, and therefore rethink variances in that line.
Well, I think there are two separate things going on here. And one is. Oh, thanks. Hope it was my turn. I agree with you that, you know, we, we need to, um, you know, be more lenient about these variances to take care of people that really want to stay within their framework. That's great. But the other, to separate the, the things you just said then is that we need to rethink our code. And, you know, I think we have, we struggle with this code a lot. And maybe it's time for us to stop struggling with the code and to redo it and make it fit for, you know, people that want to build and not make this such an onerous thing. And, um, you know, I'm very anti-variance, I have to tell you guys. You know, I wish I wasn't. But the reason I am is because one variance leads someone to the next guy and the next guy. You know, so I went up and down your block and I looked at all the houses. And I looked at all the porches and I didn't understand the pergola thing. I thought you wanted to build out a porch, but okay, this is good. Glad that's settled. Um, and, uh, so I'm, all that concerns me whenever we give these variances is the next one that's going to come knocking on the door and are we encroaching upon our neighbors? That's all. And that concerns me. And I, I, um, and that's where it kind of nags at me to do the right thing by everybody. And I'm, maybe that's just not possible. But yeah, we need to rethink our code. I'm done.
Kabir?
You know, I, I appreciate the frustration on, on variances. And that's why I'm, I'm very keen on us following a sort of decisioning process that takes its guide from the code. Because, you know, one person's pergola is another person's something else. So it's very important that we, you know, try and very narrowly kind of apply the code in a, in a disciplined fashion. And, and I, by the way, I just want to identify, is this the first application under the update we made, Steve? Right when we removed all the protrusions?
Yes, yes.
So in that sense, it's a great case study, uh, for all of us. And I think it's an important one. I think given the guidance we have, given the testimony we received, I think it's very hard to establish that the variances being sought are going to interfere with light and air between residences and other structures, that it is, uh, that it will be incompatible with scale, massing and character of the town. I'm thinking of a number of other recent applications when that was very clearly established. And that it does not, you know, unreasonably adversely affect the use enjoyment and value of nearby properties. I think despite what, what I think it was Mrs. Levine commented, I do appreciate hearing from one of the neighbors. And Mrs. Levine doesn't live, live next to the applicant, um, Tamara does. And I think that was very useful to hear. And I found the architect's response quite thoughtful on light interference. And, um, and then I would, you know, while I don't want to make this standard practice, I do, I am informed to some extent from my own personal experience, but we were also equally thoughtful to not extend the footprint and build up. And I do believe it takes thought. And so I appreciate the applicant's commentary on that front. I think there are ways in which one can do cookie cutter homes and so it does take thought to do it. And I think it's reflected in the application, so. Um, and lastly, I fully support Robin's orientation, which is that from an environmental lens, that if we are thinking, we need, people need to, you know, their families, we need the space, you know, people need the space. How do we make it work? And from an environmental lens, I think how we make it work is people building up. And here, not only they are building up, but they are staying within the footprint, which is laudable, I think, from that perspective as well. And, um, and to the extent, Robin, you were saying, we should kind of more tightly indicate that in the code. I'd be happy to, uh, work in our working sessions to try and figure that out.
So it sounds like you're prepared to make a motion, Councilor Kumar.
Yes. Um, Steve, should I go ahead or do you have any additional reaction to what I said?
I, actually, I agree with everything that everyone has said. I guess the one concern I have is that our obligation is to assess this based on the town's code today, not how we think the town code should be. Just, just a thought as we consider this, but, as you know, I am happy to consider, um, and push forward, uh, improvements to our town code as, as we apply lessons learned. So yes, please, please proceed.
Okay, I will, I will try to word it. I'm, I'm very bad at these, so the applicant will.
No, you're not bad at it. You make an initial attempt and the town attorney.
I'm misfortune of never having any legal training, so you know that.
No, you don't. That's why we have the town attorney.
All right, so, um, I moved to approve the various application by Daniel Brammer Wurtick and Rebecca Nabadrid for the construction of second story addition to the existing house on property located at 5613 Warwick Place. The.
Is that sufficient, Mr. Town Attorney?
No, I want to add something, which is that based on the fact that we, we, you know, that the proposed variances would not significantly interfere with light and air between residences, are not in cap- uh, in incompatible with the scale, massing and character of the town, and would otherwise not unreasonably adversely affect the use enjoyment and value of nearby properties.
Okay, well, that was a beautiful motion. Is that legally and technically sufficient?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there a second? I see Councilor Bar. Okay, now is there discussion on the motion?
So I, I think we need to add the wall. Do we need to do anything with wall check? Since we're just building up, I guess we don't even need to do wall check.
It's on the permit.
Not yet, because the permit hasn't been requested yet.
Ah, got it. Thank you. Okay, is there, is there further discussion on the motion?
This is kind of on the motion. So we approve this, they go and they finish designing their house. They come back to us for a permit, obviously. And at that point, why is it, why are we, if we've approved these variances, what do we have to approve when they come back for the permit?
This is, uh, one of the, uh, proposals I've made frequently to my fellow council members that if there are no.
Let's let, let's let the town attorney answer the question and not, we don't need to talk about legislation.
I know, I know. Go ahead.
Under the, under the current town code, building permits are subject to public hearings. So the, the code does set forth requirements to be considered on a, a. So the, the code does set forth requirements to be considered on a permit application.
But Debbie.
And that a hearing be held.
Debbie, if you agree with me, we can still have a public hearing, but we can put it on the consent agenda.
No construction is going to happen as a result of these variances being approved. Okay, so no trees will be damaged or, or right. No cars will be parked blocking neighbors, blah, 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 blah. When we get to the approval of the permit, it's those things we need to look at at that time. Okay.
Well, everyone is highly informed on this. It's great that you all had good, the correct answer. Is there further discussion on the motion?
I, I have a follow-up question, please.
Okay. Oh, you mean after the vote?
No.
Do you have a question about the motion?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
If we approve this motion, does that tie our hands when the building permit comes around? I'm just thinking of a scenario where maybe some of the other neighbors on Warwick decide to weigh in and they object because of the way it will impact the light and the aesthetics of the street. Could the council then reconsider and say not approved or?
Sure, so the council would not be in a position to reconsider the variance. Neighbors who wanted to comment had to comment tonight if the hearing is over tonight. However, comments on the permit application can still be made under the criteria that the town council applies when considering a building permit. There, they are a different set of criteria that govern variances and permit applications.
God, thank you.
I have a quick question. Why are we approving the variances before we see, before the permit? Are we putting the cart before the horse?
Let's let the town attorney answer that.
Sometimes, perhaps often, applicants like to know whether they have permission to build something, whether they can get a variance to build something before they finalize their plans. Before all the, you know, engineering is done and the final set of plans are, are produced. So this is what might be called a phase of the, the construction.
It's prefer, it's really preferable that it's done in advance. So it's less complicated when the building permit is brought to the council.
And also from a resident applicant's perspective, that is, you know, you know, less burdensome financially.
Yeah.
Which we should.
It's really, yeah, it, it's, I think everybody answered the question. Is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you. Thank you very much. The next item is the building administrators' report.
Uh, just a few things to go over tonight. At forty-five oh one Cumberland and at forty-five oh three Cumberland. Both of those houses are progressing. And they should be completed within the one-year timeframe. At forty-nine hundred Cumberland Avenue, the applicant supplied for a building permit to add in addition to the left side of the house. Uh, the town has issued the building permit back in December, but I spoke to the homeowner and they have no start date for the construction. And at fifty-five oh six Trent, the council approved the building permit on April fourth, and the town will be issuing the demolition and the building permit sometime this week. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Council President Serco, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bar.
No questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller.
No questions.
Thank you, Councilor Kumar.
One question for, for Matt. Moving forward, Matt, would we supplement these updates with what we had discussed at the working session on, on code? Sort of enforcement updates, like, you know, we wanted, or, you know, the things that we have specially requested as part of approval. Are we checking on that? And is that happening? Will that show up in the building? Report? Will it show up as a separate report? Just a quick, sorry to ask it now, but I.
No, no, no. Thank you. Yeah, we, we can do that. I'll, I'll talk to Doug about what our best way of formatting that for you is, but yeah, we, we can just, we can just include permit criteria in there and yeah, we, yeah, so.
That's a recurring kind of concern of residents that we, we have these discussions, we make certain very specific recommendations, and then we lose sight of them as.
Right.
And, and if you bring it up, we will, we will lose sight of them. So.
Okay, yep, I, I'll, I'll, I'll put my head together with Doug and Linda and we'll, we'll figure out a, a good way to present that for you all.
Thank you. The next item is a discussion motion to consider approval of the spring twenty-twenty-two tree planting list as recommended by the town arborist and the Parks and Natural Resources Committee. Forty-eight oh one Essex Avenue, Red Maple, forty-seven oh two Fallston Avenue, a Yoshino Cherry, forty-eight oh one Fallston Avenue Black Gum, fifty-four oh three Graystone Street, a white fringed tree, fifty-eight thirteen Surrey Street, a service berry, forty-seven oh seven Trent Court and the American Beach, fifty-four ten Trent Street, a London Plain Tree, fifty-five sixteen Uppingham Street, a red bud, and fifty-five twenty Uppingham Street, a red bud. Mister, I see that our town arborist, Dr. Feather, is here, would you like to present this, please?
Yes, we made up the list and some of it was made with suggestions from the Park and Natural Resources Committee. And there's thirteen trees in total. I've sent it out for get a bid on it. I haven't received it back yet from Stadler Nursery to supply and plant the trees. And I guess we had no comments from any of the residents, so they were getting trees. So if, if the council approves this, we can go ahead and proceed probably within the next couple of weeks, get them installed.
Okay, thank you, Council President Serco. Do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bar.
It, it is just checked, Robert. So you did add the trees suggested by the members of the PNRC to this list, right?
Yes, a couple of them, yes.
I guess so. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Heller, do you have any questions?
Yeah, um, how is it that we notify the residents that they're getting a tree?
The office. Yeah, the office sends a notice to each address.
By email or snail mail or what?
I, I think it's a paper drop. Isn't it, Matt?
Yeah, that's what we've done in the past.
Okay, just wondering.
Well, there, I think there wasn't there a request, Mr. Town Manager, that there be notice put on the I, I thought that, I thought the town staff was in some other way notifying besides what's in the code. Is that not right?
We put it in the town journal as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kumar, do you have any questions?
Yes, Dr. Feather, just to confirm, the PNRC has reviewed this list.
Yes.
And picking up on Councilmember Debbie Heller's question, just to clarify, you put a, is it snail mail? There's something dropped in the mailbox as a residence?
I think they were actually dropped at the doors, aren't they, Matt?
They just dropped at the door. Okay.
Probably through the door, you know.
Yeah, yeah, usually through the door handle or, you know, just roll it up and put it.
They have a mail slot. You put it through the mail slot.
Given the PNRC has reviewed this, I think we, we go forward here, but I'm wondering moving forward, we should do an email if it's possible to do that. I think that would be greatly appreciated.
Probably need to do both.
Who are, who are you? I think that the SAP always considers these suggestions by councilmembers. So who are you suggesting that they email?
The residents, those properties will suddenly have a new tree in front of them. And I think for the residents that have a particular view on how they want their landscaping to look like, they often have a suggestion and it ends up happening after the fact because they lose sight of being.
So I think that, I think that that's a good suggestion, but oftentimes a tree, the, the tree has an impact on more than just the property that's in front of. So I think, I think that.
That's why it comes to the council.
I think the staff needs to think about, I think, I think we should all, perhaps we can talk about this at a work session on who, how we're going to figure out.
Agreed.
How we're going to give direction to the staff on.
Yeah, just to be hundred percent clear, one is that we will not base it on what that particular resident says. We just want to ensure that they actually know about it.
Yeah.
That's the only piece that we want to make sure happens properly. And I think, I think it's a hit or miss right now. And then I have a last question, which is related to this, Dr. Feather, which is, I know you're working on a comprehensive database of all the trees in town. I would be very grateful if, whenever we can cross the finish line on that, because I think we do need, when we look at these lists, a holistic view of what's going on with trees in town, which the council currently doesn't have. And I think we will just be better thought partners to you when this, when this comes up.
Okay, I, I hear you and I'm working on it as fast as I can.
Thank you. I'm happy to help.
Yeah, do you have, do you have any further questions, Councilor Kumar?
None.
Okay, thank you. So even though this is listed as discussion, this is a public hearing. I'm sorry that I announced that incorrectly. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated they wish to speak on this item?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yep, go ahead. A motion that we approve the tree list as presented by Dr. Feather tonight. I'm not going to list all the trees. There were thirteen of them. And it's.
As, as, as published. Is there a second?
Second.
I saw, I think I saw Councilmember Serco first, President Serco. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed. Okay, that passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is public hearing motion to consider adoption of resolution amending the town's water aerobic fee, Mr. Town Manager.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick background, it did include a, a write-up for the town council, but the water aerobics fees were last changed in the council approved to change them in November of twenty nineteen, so they took effect in twenty twenty, raising the water aerobics fees from five dollars to eight dollars. The water aerobics contract agreement is at a cost of ninety-five dollars per class to the town. There's typically between eight to twelve participants per water aerobics class. The maximum number of participants is twelve. And so doing some mental math, I was working with Councilmember Heller to put together a proposal that might help the town have a more self-sustaining water aerobics program. And if, if, just doing the math, if, if twelve people show us, so if it's a full class at eight dollars, then that's the only way that the class is getting paid for by itself. And so we were thinking of what we thought were creative ways that people might be able to save some money, but also that the town might have a more regular uh, fee flowing into it. But certainly heard back from residents that may have been some confusion and just generally not feeling comfortable with any changes to the way that fees are paid. So in the update that I wrote to the town council, I, I recommended that we maybe consider instead, forego, forego any plans to do a monthly fee this year. Just, just track it moving ahead as accurately as we can. Try to communicate it and, and start thinking about it soon after the pool season ends this year. So we have plenty of time to get feedback from people and communicate a plan to town residents. But for this year, to, to simply bump up the fees so that we're, we're cooping a little bit more of the money. I, I suggested twelve. That means if eight people show up to the class, then the class is paid for. There certainly some days where, where four, five, six people show up, but I think on the whole, that would make us that would, that would make us in a, a better fiscal situation as it pertains to the water aerobics class. So that, that.
That concludes your report.
That concludes my report, other than to say I, I, I did have the write-up there, so I just would, would reference that as well as you're thinking about it.
Okay, thank you. Council, President Serco, do you have any questions?
So I say thank you very much, Matt, for working on this issue. I'm just curious, have we received any input from either the pool committee or the revenue committee on this proposal?
Uh, no, I, I think the pool committee felt like that was kind of out of their wheelhouse, out of their purview to think about the fees. And the revenue committee just hasn't had an opportunity to look at it. So our, our kind of.
Pool management committee.
Pool management group, which, which is, is myself, Councilmember Heller stepped in, Mayor Slaven, the pool committee chair, have kind of a working group that meets periodically throughout the year. We, we kind of put our heads together to, to work on this plan.
Did you have any other questions, Council President Serco?
No questions. Thank you very much.
Councilor Bar.
Yeah, I'm actually going to propose a motion to increase the fee to ten dollars, rather than what was proposed at twelve dollars in, in the write-up. I think we've got to certainly consider whether the fees we receive fully pay for the activity, and that is one important consideration. We've also got to look at how far we're, how much we're increasing the amount in a single swoop. And that's a fifty percent bump up if we do eight to twelve, from eight to twelve. So what I'm assessing is that we approve a ten-dollar fee, which is a twenty-five percent increase, still substantial. At the same time, as I, we discussed at the work session last time, we bump fees every year into our budget work sessions and we raise any fees at that time that we think that have fallen behind, so that we're tracking the fees and we collect the information at, at that time too. So that's where I'm coming from.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Heller.
I think that one of the things we really need to consider is that this, we really need to recap, recoup what, what, what it costs. There's nothing, as far as I know, in our budget that pays, that has been approved to pay for water aerobics. And I can contrast this to the morning, early morning swim, which pays for its class a hundred percent. And has for all the years it's been going. And I want us to work towards water aerobics doing the same thing. And I think with, with better record-keeping this year, that, that Matt and Matt, Matt Trauland and Matt Zaff and I have talked about, we can then assess, you know, at the end of the year, whether we've met that goal. Have we paid for it? Do the fees need to be higher? Do they need to be lower? You know, is there a better way to do this to ensure that we pay for this? Or we put it in the budget. But I, I, we can debate that at another time. That's where I am.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Kumar.
Yeah, so I, I shared Debbie's. Yeah, so I, I shared Debbie's view. I think we need these activities of the pool, you know, our, our emphasis needs to be this, the functioning, maintenance, upkeep of the pool itself. And I think the activities that are then, um, you know, being conducted at the pool ideally are either cost-recoverable, so, you know, or are revenue positive for us, like Camp Silver said. And so, and I think there are, you know, there are a number of activities that way that we need to consider. So in the spirit of that, I do appreciate this effort. Matt, I, I'm wondering, just to clarify a couple of things. In terms of the process for this, you did consult with the conveners of the water aerobics classes, one way or the other. I know there are a number of people who wrote, we've all been CC'd on them. But was there some consultation with that group in proposing this, uh, bump up? Um, or was there, um, steps along those lines in your process?
Not in any formal way, no.
Okay, and then, um, you had, can you clarify, there were, there was a different proposal? And then you revised the proposal. What was the original proposal? And then just to clarify how you revised the proposal.
So what I, what I, what I had originally, um, put out there for the council to consider, and I think that the council did consider it, the work session, was to have two different methods that residents could pay for water aerobics. And one is, one would be they can continue to do drop-in fees at a twelve-dollar per rate class. And the other would be to pay for classes on a monthly session. So both options are available to residents. The monthly option would, would, would be at a cost of just under eight dollars per class, assuming they went to every single class. So I was thinking it was an incentivized way that residents could, uh, pay for these classes, pay ahead, the town could have a steadier revenue stream. And the resident, and the residents who do participate regularly actually have an opportunity to save money, although enough to buy, you know, a box of Pop-Tarts, not, not very much, but, um. But I, I think to your, to your original question and point, uh, I, I think that that wasn't communicated particularly well, uh, especially to the residents who do participate in the water aerobics program regularly. And I think it is a program that has, you know, a small number of residents that do regularly participate. And so that's why my second, my, my follow-up proposal was to take a step back and, and acknowledge that the, the monthly payments weren't communicated in a very clear way. So let's just take those off the table for right now. People, people are comfortable and understand and like the flexibility of being able to just drop into a class when they feel like it and when they're available. But then let's just, uh, respond to the fact that it's not revenue neutral at the moment. So let's bump the per-class, uh, fees up so that it's, it is or closer to being revenue neutral.
And just to thank you for that. And by the way, I, I fully applaud efforts to improve our revenue situations. I appreciate you being thoughtful about this. Debbie, uh, made a comment about usage numbers. So you don't know for, for, for a fact that the proposed increase will in fact improve, uh, make this activity cost-recoverable based on historic usage.
But it can't, it can't. We can't know because.
Well, it's the same group every summer.
Same group, but if it's, if the weather isn't good, it's a little cold or whatever, people decide not to come. That's fair, you know, um, but then we pay, we pay for the teacher. So if there are five people in the class, let's say we go up to ten dollars, that's fifty, that's fifty dollars towards the ninety-five. And so we were looking for a way to make sure we covered that cost. Now with increasing the cost, maybe it'll be enough, you know, let's say we get twelve people in a class, you know, for a good amount of time, then maybe we will be able to cover it. So this year, we're going to just do much better in our bookkeeping. We've already discussed how people are going to sign in, so we know who's been there. And we can just do, have a better conversation next year. And we'll do it around budget time, which will make more sense.
And the, uh, uh, one other relatively small point I, I wanted to make was that last year, the cost per class was eighty-five dollars. This year, it's ninety-five dollars. So that, that was another, which is only ten dollars, but when you only have ten participants, you know, it, it, it does, it does make sense that it would be another dollar per participant.
My, just to, you know, say this at this point, feels sensible. It'd be great to hear from residents. I know their hands are firmly raised at this moment. Um, but that we, um, you know, may, maybe makes sense to do this increase along the lines you're proposing. But I might suggest the list is growing, the stuff we send to the revenue committee. But we might, I might suggest that we have them look at it thoughtfully so that it is indeed cost-recoverable, because I think that should be the goal. And I think we start here, we may need to look at other activities at the pool to be cost-recoverable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Town Manager, uh, could you call on the people that have indicated they wish to speak?
Sure, yep. Uh, the first person is Ruth Susswein. I hope I pronounced that wrong. I apologize if I.
Hi there, it's Ruth Susswine and, um, but you might know me as Ruth Albert. And, uh, so first of all.
Remember, hi Ruth, remember to tell us your street for the record.
Fallstone, Fallstone. Across from the pool.
Thank you.
Um, so I would first say, uh, thank you to Matt for revising your, uh, proposal. That seems more reasonable, given that we did not have a lot of input until very recently. Um, and, uh, thank you to Councilman Bar for a more reasonable, uh, bump up. As you said, it's fifty percent increase, although we're not talking a lot of money here, I acknowledge. Um, it's still a fifty percent increase after, um, a decent size increase just, um, what will be two summers ago. Um, just for a little, uh, everyone's understanding, I believe, I may be wrong, Lucy can confirm this, but I believe we limited the number of people to ten because of COVID last year, um, to ten per class. Um, uh, I do, uh, think, uh, that people were excellent about signing in every day. Um, to my knowledge about paying, but I don't know, maybe I'm wrong. Um, so I guess I have a couple of questions. One is, um, has there been some sort of problem here or has it just been a bookkeeping problem? One, and two, um, are.
Ruth, the issue tonight is just about the, um, the fee. So if you can just comment on the fee, these other questions Matt can clarify at another time. But tonight, the topic.
I think a fee of twelve dollars per class is excessive. Number one, fifty percent increase is excessive. And I guess my primary question is, um, I understand that you want all costs to be covered. At the same time, I would ask, um, how many other town activities apart from early morning swim are completely covered by the people who use it? Um, because what, what do we, uh, do we only cover the police officer and our town lights? Or do we cover other activities to assist the residents?
Good question. Let's let the town manager answer that.
Sure, so, um, uh, the town by law can't spend more money than it takes in. And I, I, I know that that's broader than what you're asking, but I'm not, I'm not saying that flippantly that we're not able to run a deficit in the town. In terms of recreational activities, uh, by and large, it, it's a mixed bag, I would say, because at, at the moment, the town subsidizes the, the swim team, for example. The swim team, I, I, uh, I believe is, is working on that. Uh, the morning swim, as you mentioned, is, uh, cost-recoverable. Uh, residents who use a coach or trainer on the tennis court pay out of pocket for that. Um, and, uh, renting the town hall, for example, uh, also something that I think we are looking to address in the not-too-distant future to, to try to make that cost-recoverable as well. So I hope that, that quickly answered your question.
Thanks. It sounds like, um, other things, you know, are, uh, partially paid for by the town. And, um, this was, and it sounds like you'd like to change that. So I'd say, please consider that this is an activity used by a small number of people, but they care about it a lot, and we should, uh, have that same benefit. If the town is helping assist, uh, defray the costs of other things, they should consider that too when, uh, thinking about this activity. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, next person, Mr. Town Manager.
Next up was, uh, Lucy Freeman.
Hi there, this is Lucy Freeman on Fallstone Two. It's very convenient for Ruth and me to walk down to the pool. I'd like to just start with a value statement and say that we have a wonderful pool. You know, it is, it's a beautiful pool. You look out on the forest. And I think the more it's used, we put a lot of money into it, building it. And the more it is used, the better. And when we have four-lapse lanes with water aerobics, and then other people are using it for lap swim, the other two lanes, family are using it, the shallow end. And every time I see it well-used, I think it's wonderful. And it is also wonderful for the lap swimmers, the water aerobics people, the swim team people, all to get out and exercise, you know? We all know this from Michelle Obama, it's important to get out and move. And that is what we all want to do. Okay, so now what has been raised here? I, I knew nothing about this until it was, I saw it on the agenda for the work session. And I understand that this proposal has been discussed or doing something has been discussed at the pool management committee. And you know what? All of us who take part in water aerobics, of course, we live here. We have emails here, we have phones here, we're out walking the streets. Anyone could have approached this. When I sent some emails out with a couple of questions about this, I have, I did find the initial plan from Matt, and thank you, Matt, for telling me that because I was concerned what's going on. And then I know, I haven't, I don't know, I know what we paid last summer. I don't know what we took in. I know that before COVID, we used to have twenty people at times at a class. Ruth and anybody else on this can confirm this, but, and I think back then we came close to meeting it. Then in the year, um, uh, two thousand nineteen, I think just that year, we turned in our papers, we signed it up, we put money into our pool account. I don't know if it was ever subtracted. Twenty, our first year with member splash, I'm not sure what happened this, that, that year. But last year, we all checked in, we all check in on member splash, we all sign the paper. You know, I deliver the paper or somebody for me delivers the paper to the town hall. And all of us in water aerobics, we do the best that we can with this. Uh, if we had adopted, oh, so I wanted to be inclusive. You know, the lap swim, because they work that the way they want to work it. And the way I want to work it with the water aerobics is, somebody sends me an email and says, can I try it one time? I want to say yes. And we have people who have jobs, they're supposed to be at their jobs, but they are working at home, so they sneak down and go to water aerobics. And maybe they can do it once a week, once every other week. Well, let's not charge those people three hundred percent or six hundred percent. So then they go to the daily amount, which would be a fifty percent increase. But we have people who are working, who are taking care of grandchildren, who are traveling. Everyone travels pretty much in the summer. And so for every single person, I believe that, uh, the monthly fee would be excessive, would be like a thirty percent, fifty percent, to a three hundred percent more expensive. Then coming individually, people have told me, if it's raised to twelve dollars, that, uh, they won't come. So I think that this plan to raise money might be cost-effective. I'm really appreciative of what Robin said and that he suggested raising it to ten dollars. But first of all, may I just say, and Kumar brought this up, let's, you know, we're happy. I've been emailing with the people in water aerobics. Everyone's happy to talk about this, if the town is willing to talk to us. And I must say, that's my concern. Are you willing to talk to us?
But Lucy, what's your, so can you state what, what is your recommendation?
No, because I happen to believe in talking to the people. You know, I would talk to the attendees. You know, I believe in, you know, everyone participating. I, I will raise this ten dollars. I will raise this ten dollars. I know the people I've talked to are opposed to twelve dollars. I'll raise ten dollars.
So you, so you're, you support ten and not twelve?
I.
Or do you support no increase? Or do you support no increase?
I don't, we increased two years ago. When did the swim team increase the amount they pay?
This year, I.
I, 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 do you know the answer to that, Matt?
Yeah, the fees have gone up this year.
I, I believe that the fees, well, I don't know off the top of my head. I, I do know that, for example, the, the early morning, sorry.
May I suggest something? May I suggest something?
Man is on, she knows.
I know, but may I suggest something, Mayor Slaven? I, I want to focus this conversation on what is on the agenda and.
Right, and so we're looking for the comments on, on the, on the topic, right? So that's why I'm asking, I'm asking Lucy.
I, I will, I will raise ten dollars with this group to see if they would approve it. I know that a number of people would approve it. I don't know. Ruth's on. Let's ask Ruth. Barbara Condes is on.
That's good. That's, I think that's great feedback. That's.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Lucy, do you have anything else you want to add?
No, but, but talk to us.
Thank you. Matt, who, who else wanted to speak?
Um, uh, right now, it looks like it's a nickname, so I'm sorry. It just says AM PM. And that, just don't forget.
You're muted.
Comments.
Okay, I'm not great at this Zoom stuff. Anyway, yeah, I, I love. I live on Greystone.
Thank you.
And, uh, I didn't know about this until I got our newsletter, our news pamphlet. And I was very surprised and I don't understand the monthly fee. And I, I think having an individual fee makes a lot of sense because we do have, sometimes we can't get there because of taking care of someone or another appointment comes up, but we definitely love doing it. It's so healthy and we're, a lot are, um, all ages. And it is keeping us a healthy community by having this. And I love, I, I mean, I think, uh, we're very lucky to have a wonderful opportunity together to, to, um, have this exercise in the mornings and three days a week.
So what, what's your, so do you have a comment on the, on the fee?
Well, my comment is that, uh, the surprise was the monthly fee and then the twelve-dollar fee. Uh, you know, it was working before we paid, we did our sign-ins, just like Lucy said and Ruth said, and we done, I don't understand what the splash is. If it's because that, we would sign in, I made sure that I signed in and made sure that that was done. And I would assume that takes care of keeping us in order. But, um, ten dollars, if it goes to ten dollars, I guess I would pay that, but, but not twelve.
So you're, so you're okay with ten, but not twelve?
Right. I mean, and I also not a monthly fee like that, unless it's less. Because, uh, it's hard to, to, you want to be there every single week, three times a week, but that's not necessarily possible in our lives. I mean, there are things that come up, so I, I, that really sounds is very strange.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Okay, thank you for, um, having this meeting. Yes.
Thanks for attending. Thanks, thanks for attending. Is anyone else that wishes to speak, Matt?
Um, Lucy's raised her hand again, but I didn't know if anybody else wished to make a comment before I circled back.
Okay, Lucy, you have something else you want to add?
Well, could we table it for tonight? And I could send out an email to our group and see if everyone would accept $10.
Okay, well, the council will be debating soon, so is that, if that, that's your suggestion, thank you.
That's my suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Are there, are there further?
Uh, yes, Patty Freeman.
Okay.
Uh, I'll be brief. I too was disappointed with how this was handled in terms of not being informed until the last minute. But I would, I would go ahead with a $10 fee, I would not be happy with a $12 fee.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, Mr. Town Manager?
I guess Barbara Condos has raised her hand.
Councilmember. Councilor Condos, you wanted to talk? I think she, I think she, she took her hand down.
No, I didn't take my hand, I had to push.
Oh, okay.
Almost everybody. Yes, I would, I would agree to a $10 fee. I think that's much fairer than a $12 drop in fee. I can never come on Wednesday because I have another commitment, although I come every Monday and Friday. I would not be happy having to pay $12 for each Monday and each Friday. Just because I cannot come on Wednesday. I think at one point there was a, the drop in fee was supposed to be $12, which seems unreasonable.
Okay, thank you. It is, is that the last one, Mr. Town Manager?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you, thank you, everyone, for your input and for your emails. And now I will turn over to the council, I think perhaps Councilor Barr is prepared to make a motion.
Okay, I propose that we increase the water aerobics fee for if physically your 23 to $10 per session from the current eight orders per session.
I think it might be for the season, right?
Yes.
Not for the fiscal year.
It's, 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 it's from the pool opening to closing.
Yeah, it's a, it's for the season, council member. Well, okay, is the, is there a second?
Second. Were we going to discuss?
You had a discussion.
No, we just, yeah.
We can discuss, yeah.
So is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes, so just to get back to one of the residents' questions about other price increases, whether or not there were other price increases. I just looked up in my notes for the Somerset Swim Team. The early bird and and registration dues, sorry, not just for the swim team, but registration dues for early bird, looking at a $15 cost increase this summer and a $25 cost increase for regulars swimming. So, so there are other increases in the works. And I, I, I think that Robin's suggestion of $10 per drop in is, is a good compromise. I recommend moving ahead with that as opposed to just continuing to debate this.
Supporting him up.
So you support the motion? And we need to gather more data just to see how it actually plays out for future years.
Yeah, I want, I, if I'm, I know we are, we are moving this to resolution, may I say, but we're a quick comment that I think it will be, we will need to revisit this, because I think what council president is saying. So, and what Debbie was saying earlier, once we look at the usage data. You know, so I think we, we, I'm in support of it, obviously, I seconded the motion. I think at the end of the summer, this summer, we will need to look at the usage data and look at a path to being cost recoverable.
Well, yeah, the idea is that we, we build it into our annual budget review, in fact, which is before the new season starts anyway. And it's just all fees, we look at them and we collect data on them and see whether we need to raise them basically, or lower them, we could.
We can pass revenue committee to, to, to kind of be involved, at least.
We can do that, yes.
Is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all this in favor. All this, thank you, thank you very much. The next item is a public hearing motion to approve of a resolution establishing a position description for the town's appointed Bethesda Fire Department Board Member as recommended by the town's Public Safety Committee, Mr. Town Manager.
Yeah, this came through the Public Safety Committee. They've had several discussions and talks related to and with members of the Bethesda Fire Department Board. Um, currently, Barbara Condos, who, who has joined us this evening, does serve as the town's representative to the Bethesda Fire Board. I understand that the committee's been working through a couple of different versions of the description for, for this liaison position with the town. Had shared a previous version, but I did receive an email from Ms. Condas that said that she did not get an opportunity to comment on the proposal here. And had asked that she have that opportunity to talk with the committee.
So I see that the Chair of the Committee is here, I don't know if he wanted to add anything to the proposal. Chair of Us Wanted, did you want to add anything? Okay, I guess he's not.
You're on mute at the moment, Kumar.
Yes.
Did you want to add anything to Matt's report?
I was trying to unmute. I believe we did send Barbara the draft of the position description very early on in the process. And if anything, during the committee discussion, we actually shortened it and made it simpler and reduced the number of duties. So that's all I have to say, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council President Serco, do you have any questions?
No questions, glad to move ahead on this.
Thank you. Councilmember Barr.
I would like a small change in it, actually. And maybe we need to reconsider it, but it is a tiny, a small change, it's on item C in the periodic reporting number four. And the point is that the position description is going to be long term. And C begins because of the critical status of A706. I seriously hope that the critical status of A706 is not long term. So I just take out that clause and say the town's closest ambulance, ambulance A706, report to the council monthly, how many hours? And all the rest can follow, it's just take out the language on critical status, that's all.
Okay, so you're gonna, you're gonna make an amendment later. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Heller.
No questions.
Uh, Councilmember Kumar.
I would love to hear from Barbara Condos, if it's possible, as part of this process, given that she currently embodies the position for which we are proposing a new description.
Okay, but did you have any questions of the?
I have, I want to clarify, I do have one question, which is that I know there have been some challenge, challenges with BFT and some changes there, but in terms of sort of the impact on residents, Matt, and and Mr. Vaswani, I mean, have residents seen a gap in, you know, response times? And, you know, what matters for residents is does the ambulance show up on time? Uh, is the department responding on time? My impression, again, I haven't looked at this, is that we are not, we are sufficiently covered. I think the hearing that Mayor Slavin and Sean conducted revealed that we are very well covered. So I'm just wondering, behind this proposal, is there any broader concern about a gap in service that our residents have experienced? And, you know, if you have a view on that, I would truly welcome that.
Maybe the Chair, maybe, maybe Chair Vaswani can answer that.
Yes, thank you. There is a gap in service because the, this ambulance is actually mandated under the county's fire rescue master plan, which is that master plan is based on studies and statistics and response times. So this ambulance play, actually plays an important role in providing, you know, the required service. And there's no doubt that if this ambulance is not available, the next closest ambulance will be dispatched, so that's not really an issue. You will get an ambulance eventually, but it will result in a delay and and an increase in average response times. Now, you know, it's a bit of a roll of the dice, you may, when you call 911, you may get an ambulance that happens to be driving, you know, past your block on the way back from the hospital. So it's always a sort of a crap shoot, but on the average, having this ambulance in service will lower the average response times for our neighborhood. And the other thing I wanted to add is that the Bethesda Fire Department Board plays a critical role in making a lot of decisions that affect the quality and of course, the quantity of service to us. And it's important to have a position description in place so that this person or the representative can keep the town informed and take back the town's concerns to the Bethesda Fire Department Board. Thank you.
The only thing I would add, though, Kumar, is that the Bethesda Fire Department only had an ambulance since 2018. So I think it's a little bit disingenuous to say when that ambulance isn't fully staffed, that we're getting slower response times. When it is fully staffed, we're getting faster and more ambulances available than ever before. But it's not, it's not slower. And every meeting we've had with the Montgomery County Fire Department, they've stressed that we, we get excellent service, that they are part of overseeing it as you represented. And that to, to imply that Somerset's coverage is is, is, is being negatively impacted. And that people's safety is being negative impacted is, is a bridge too far.
I, I appreciate your, your comment, Matt, because I would caution the Public Safety Chair, because I think pursuing this issue has created this impression that there's a problem. And I don't think there is a problem. And there's no data to suggest otherwise. And so I just want to caution that we don't want to make our residents feel anxious that like a very critical service, when they are in dire need of being rushed to the hospital, is not available, that is not the case. And so, and if that is not a problem, then all of this seems like a lot of noise about nothing, is my impression. So I, I'm struggling to understand it here. But I, I'm assuming more informed and smarter people are, are behind it and and I know what's going on, but I'm struggling to understand the it. And we, there've been a lot of sort of motion and movement around this issue, but I'm not sure where we are going.
Well, I, perhaps Chair Vaswani can better explain the need for a job description rather than going off on a tangent about the ambulance service, which isn't really part of that, so why don't you? Well, Chair Vaswani, why don't you talk about that?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the council members' concerns. But I just want to add that as the population increases in Bethesda, the master plan is supposed to account for that. And that's part of the reason why this ambulance is in there. So population is increasing, downtown Bethesda is developing more, and this ambulance is needed to provide the additional coverage that's needed. But to Mayor Slavin's question, currently, there is no position description, there's no term of office, there's no there's no reporting requirement or any requirement for communication or collaboration between the BFD representative and the town council. And the town council is the body that's confirming that representative. And so it would make sense to have this position description in place.
And Jeffrey, Mayor Slavin and Committee Chair, do we have position descriptions for other representatives? Like to the CCF?
So we've, remember from our works, remember from our work sessions that we, we never got to that item, but I think that the council is interested in having some connection, creating connection. It just so happened that this, that the committee moved forward and made this recommendation. But, but I think we've all kind of agreed that we need to have I, I, they're calling it a job description, but it's really like some requirements for all the, all the positions that we, that we serve. So the connection to the, the, the chapter, the MML chapter, the connection to the MML positions that are, that they take on legislative matters. The, the connection to the Friendship Heights TMD Advisory Committee. And, and the connection to the, the Friendship Heights, the Coordinating Committee. You know, the, the representative to the Coordinating Committee is basically empowered to take votes on positions and doesn't have any, that, that have no connection to the, there, there's no binding to the cap, no. So the point of having all these, these policies is so that there will be more connection between the council and the, these, these bodies. So for example, the, remember the, the, the coordinating, I, I'm not really going off on a tangent, I'm really kind of explaining.
No, I appreciate this.
So for example, Councilmember Heller is the representative to the Coordinating Committee. The Coordinating Committee takes positions on issues like Little Falls Parkway. So, so she goes to the meeting and it, she doesn't necessarily have the authority to vote for the town. But she's been designated as the liaison to the committee. But if you showed up to Councilmember Kumar and you both disagreed, there, there's no policy that would decide how you would vote. So that's why we need, and it just so happens that this issue with the BFT, the, the committee's been working on, so that's why it's on the agenda tonight. But we, we need to move forward on, to have policies for all of these, these memberships that we have, you know? So when, when I go to the, to the, the convention, the MML convention, I, I'm given the authority by the league to vote for the Board of Directors. Now, other, other towns bind the mayor to vote the way the council wants. But we don't have any policies like that. But, and I think we need to have them. Because, because what, what would happen if, for example, if Councilmember Heller went and voted on an issue that you, that the majority of the council didn't agree with? Okay, that's, the council is, the council is paying for the membership, so it's not, it's not the liaison. So that's, that, that's that's why, that's why, that's why there's a need for all these policies.
But to playback, partially for the benefit of my fellow council members, we are looking at this because we're looking at all of them. Right. Trying to improve how we engage.
Right.
All these different groups.
And I think it's, and, and I think it's something that you made public, you've said supportive things about.
Yeah, we, we, we want to improve because we want to be engaged.
Yeah. In, in
In, in a
So that, in a
That, so that is, it's not the ambulance, blah, 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 blah. It's the, it's this, but it's a more internal kind of organizational issue of us being organized.
It's so that, I basically think, and I, I don't want to put words in the mouth of the committee, but it's basically so that the council can give direction to our rep. Because you're approving the rep. This has nothing to do with the individual, you know, with Councilor Condo.
That answers my question.
It's not, it, it's, this is not like any reflection on Councilor Condo's. This is so that the council who approves the rep to the BFD has the, the, um, authority to direct that person to vote the way the council wants. That's what it's all about.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Town Manager, uh, I, I think I see Councilor Condo is wanting to comment.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure she had an opportunity, um, before we move on.
Thank you. One thing, I just wanted to make sure the record is straight. I received a seven-page document from Mr. Vaswamy when this all started about the position. I, and I did receive that. It was seven pages. Since then, it's been condensed and, um, reduced. I don't, I don't know how many pages it is now, maybe two or three. That's what I didn't receive till Matt sent it to me recently, but that's fine. And I certainly agree that it would be nice to have to tell, or to let representatives know what's expected of them. I've served in this position since two thousand fifteen. There has never been any direction or, um, position description or anything else. So that's fine. So I did the best I could, but, um,
Well, just, just like I said, it's their reflection on your service.
Okay, fine. That's great. I'm just saying, I think it's a good thing to have what's expected. And I think that would be good for the person to the Friendship Heights, the MML, the County West, whatever, all of them. Um, and that's good. Uh, BFD is Somerset is in the first response area of two fire departments. BFD and I believe the other one is Glen Echo.
Glen Echo, correct. That's right.
Oversight of Glen Echo, although I've mentioned this several times and several occasions, hasn't come into play, but that's fine.
Well, well, actually, actually, Councilor Condo's, I'm glad you brought up Glen Echo because that's something that we ought to consider. Uh, we can, we, we have an opportunity to, to nominate. We don't have a right in our bylaws, but they have solicited us in the past for a board member.
That's right.
And, and, and I think that's something that we, we should strategize about. So glad you brought that up.
Okay, um, I just wanted to make it clear, the county staffs, the ambulance out of seven oh six, out of Station Six, from seven AM to five PM weekdays. This volunteer operation's goal is to cover ambulance service out of Station Six from five PM to seven AM. Five days a week and on weekends. Um, so we're working toward that goal and, and we've made progress. December was a horrible month when practically all the volunteers went on strike. We had five volunteers left, the chief left. Um, we are now up to a volunteer staff of, um, a little over seventy people. Lots of them are in training. We're doing the best we can to get them trained. The county has problems with training. Anyway, I believe we've made just tremendous gains since December.
Well.
And, um, I had one other thing, but
Well, we
My other thing is
We, that's kind of a little bit off topic, but we do appreciate so much your service and, and, and I really think that giving guidelines to all of us in, for these positions that we have outside of the town is going to make our jobs easier.
I think it will too. I think it's an excellent idea and I can wait till the other ones.
Because, because I, because, because I feel, um, um, it's my responsibility to consult, even though I, even though I have the power, for example, to vote in the MML board elections, I really feel it's my responsibility to be bound to some policy, given that the town pays the, the fee, not me, to be a member. And I think that having these kind of job descriptions, so to speak, will make our, um, um, membership in all these places all the more powerful, especially with, with the Coordinating Committee.
I think it would make it all more effective and I'm sure that everyone who's signed to this would appreciate knowing what's expected of them.
Yeah, definitely.
Anyway, only comment, and I just wanted
You so much. Thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Town Manager, are there further?
No other comments, no.
Okay, thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
Robin, do you want to lead it?
Yeah, I'll do it. I move that we accept the BFT board description for our representative with one amendment, which is to item four C. Um, and it deletes the clause referring to the critical status of ambulance of no six.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Is there discussion? I saw Council President Circa. Is there discussion hearing on all this in favor?
I
All those opposed. Thank you very much. The next item, public hearing motion to consider adoption of an ordinance adopting the town of Somerset fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget and tax rates as submitted by me per the Somerset Charter, section eighty-three forty-one, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, uh, this is a culmination of many months of work. So, um, thank you to the council and to the, uh, Budget Committee and all the committees who have, uh, played a role in, uh, getting us here. Uh, the tax rates, as you, uh, know, um, are being proposed to stay constant uh, fiscal year over next fiscal year. And, uh, after a lot of deliberation, the council, uh, introduced this budget at the April meeting. I, uh, did do a quick write-up. Um, I understand that there's a couple of different, uh, mostly minor, uh, amendments to the budget that a couple of council members, um, may want to introduce and, and start a, a brief discussion on. Um, the first related to the batting cage. The second actually was something that I mentioned, I, uh, relating to the town pool deck renovations. And, uh, the third and final one, uh, has to do with, uh, stormwater, uh, stormwater management, uh, funds. Um, so with that, Mr. Mayor, I will, I will turn it back.
Okay, thank, so I want to, uh, congratulate the staff and the Budget Committee and all the council members who have worked so hard. I know for, for three of you, it's your first time. And I want to give you all top grades. And I was delighted that, um, during the period between the introduction and tonight, there has been some very rigorous discussion about several line items. The one on, on, uh, the stormwater management funds that were put in. And also a, as you know, there were no funds in the proposed budget for the batting cage and fortunately, there's been a lot of discussion and, and I, I've ironically, I've been the biggest advocate for the batting cage for twenty years, okay? And, but, but it hasn't really been used. And, but now that no money was put in and it, the item came up and now I, I asked, I, I think Councilmember Heller is going to talk about amendment she's going to add. So, so the process works. And so when I call on you, if you could please, um, if you do have an amendment, I, I know some of you have, have disclosed it in turn, but if you have an amendment, can you just announce it so that when there's the hearing part, then residents can comment on it? So with that, uh, Council President Circa, do you have any questions? Or, or do you plan to introduce any amendments? I don't think he heard. Council President Circa, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you, Mr.
For any, okay, thank you. Councilor Barr.
I have no questions and I don't plan to introduce any amendments.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Heller.
I don't have any questions, but I plan to make an amendment.
On
Do that now?
We'll just say what it's going to be.
Oh, it's for the, it's the money for the batting cage.
And how much are you, how much did you want to add?
Well, in my, all my experience with baseball, um, I know it was suggested that we do three thousand dollars, but I did do some research here. And I don't think we need that much money, okay? I don't think we need more than a thousand dollars, but let's drop it to two, just in case I'm really wrong.
You can amend it. Remember, just because you put it in doesn't mean there'll be future discussions. So, okay, thank you. I just want you to announce that.
Okay.
Councilmember Kumar.
Well, I also
Questions or do you have it, will you be having an amendment?
I have an amendment. I'll describe it in one second. I just wanted to say upfront that I'm also, I, I thought this was a great process. I appreciate all the effort Matt put into it. And all the effort the Budget Committee put into it. And I think we've come out with a, with a phenomenal budget, frankly, on many levels. I think the one thing that I would propose to amend, I think there shouldn't be a surprise since I brought it up during the processes, is, uh, that we move the, um, certain amount, maybe a hundred and fifty K that is currently in the stormwater, uh, line for fiscal year twenty-three to the Special Capital Fund for fiscal year twenty-three. And we move all the money that's currently in the stormwater line fiscal year twenty-four and beyond into the Special Capital Fund, only because I believe that is highly consistent with the overall process that we have undertaken here, which is we will be conducting, uh, you know, thorough reviews like master plans and others to come up with specific figures. The Stormwater Committee has only just published its reports, next year reports, tremendous hard work, I know, because they got to partially engage with it. But I think we, we have a lot of, many more steps before we get to exactly what we're going to spend and it just seems inconsistent to me that we will be parking funds there without having that clear picture. And one of the great things we did, I think, with this budget is create the Special Capital Fund line because we do have a number of major infrastructure projects planned, which I'm quite confident, given how the budgeting process ran between the five of us, six of us, that, that we will, we will start tackling those meaningfully. So that's my proposed amendment.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Town Manager, is any resident or guest? Well, I, I think first we'll call on, um, Mr. Phil Young. Yeah, who deferred his, who's been so patient.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And I'm going to start my video. There we go. Okay. All right. So thanks very much for giving me this opportunity. I would just like to say that I, I support what Councilmember Kumar was just saying. In, in particular, the Stormwater Committee, who I spoke with, uh, Ellen Globakar and Julie Greenberg for over an hour, um, have done a tremendous job. There's a lot of work they've put into this. And I'd like to start by saying that I'm in favor of stormwater management. Um, but we have to recognize that town resources are limited. So it's important to get the most bang for our buck, so to speak. Um, unfortunately, at this stage, the stormwater final report is rather short on specific information because they, they did have to get it, rush it out a bit. Um, and specific information like the type of projects that would yield the greatest returns um, measured in volume of water absorbed per dollar spent. I, I read through the final report that's available at this stage and, and that type of guidance is not there yet. I, I'm sure it'll be coming in the future. Uh, the report only provides general principles as to what types of conditions would be required for a group of households requesting a grant from the town. Many details remain to be spelled out. For example, what percentage of overall cost should residents be required to contribute? This, this hasn't been defined yet in the report. What would be the minimum number of households or the minimum volume of water runoff mitigated that would be required to create a project? Probably a subcommittee of council members would be needed to approve any application. Uh, that protocol process hasn't been spelled out yet. Um, also, I think anybody benefiting from a subsidy should not be voting on approval. Otherwise, there would be a clear conflict of interest. I, I recognize that the lack of detail in the report reflects the fact that it did have to be rushed out in time for this current budget cycle. Um, it, it's important to keep in mind that there are many other priorities in town too, like the roads, the pool and LED lighting, just to name a few, which have important benefits for all residents. In, in my view as a resident, spending one point one million dollars on stormwater as proposed in the current five-year plan. That's, and that's equivalent to almost the entire ARPA grant, is a very large amount, especially given our other needs. In particular, I think we're under, underestimating the cost of road repairs in the coming years in the five-year plan. Uh, and, and one of the reasons why it's been underestimated is because we've put so much money into stormwater. The budget item needs more feedback from all residents before committing such a large sum of money. There hasn't been time to adequately solicit this feedback. There's a, a forum coming up on May tenth, but that's eight days from now. For all of these reasons, I would suggest that the council place the three hundred thousand dollars in a special capital fund for the time being. The council needs to proceed more cautiously before committing such a large sum of money. We're talking about three hundred thousand dollars, not a hundred dollars here. If the money is in a special capital fund, then it could be spent on capital projects in general. This would give the town more flexibility in how the money is spent. It could still be spent on stormwater. Um, but if it didn't get spent in time, it would at least not require a supermajority in fiscal year twenty-three to move that money from stormwater to say roads or lighting. So thank you for the opportunity to say those few words.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I know you were making that comment as a resident, so that's on the record. But I do want to say publicly, um, I want to give you a special thank you because I know that and the council knows that you are passing the baton and that this is your last appearance as, as the chair. And, you know, your contributions to the town can't even be measured. And, and I hope, I'm, I'm glad you're here tonight in both capacities because I hope that will be a hint of your future surface. And that we will be hearing from you as a resident in the future.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for those kind words. If, if you will allow me to say a few more words in farewell.
Please do.
Appreciate that.
Please take the time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, you may not know this, but it was about nine years ago when Marnie Shaw was out walking or former president of the council was out walking around the neighborhood, a common site in Somerset. Shortly after, I had looked at the latest five-year plan published in the Town Journal. I made the mistake of asking Marnie why the five-year plan showed reserves falling to zero over the coming five years. Robin probably remembers that. Uh, Marnie explained that our, as our revenue projections were very conservative, we actually had a comfortable cushion. However, she welcomed my input and then somehow convinced me that I could help Somerset improve its budgeting process if I joined an ad hoc budget committee. It was hard to say no to Marnie. At that time, the ad hoc committee comprised Marnie, Robin Barr and myself. A lot has changed since those early days and the committee is now a formal chartered committee. Robin is no longer a budget committee member, but instead a council member with many other responsibilities. Marnie has left the council after countless years of public service. In addition to myself, the Budget Committee now includes Ann Kelly Bolton and John Medalia. In addition to myself, the Budget Committee now includes Ann Kelly Bolton and John Medalia, both of whom have added greatly to the quality of our work. Notwithstanding my desire to take more personal time and be able to travel more, I would not have resigned as chair had I not been confident that I could leave the Budget Committee in capable hands, very capable hands. Fortunately, Ann was willing to step in as budget chair. I can assure you that the Budget Committee will not only remain in capable hands, but under Ann's guidance, it will continue to innovate and improve the town's ability to formulate a coherent and financially responsible budget. I'm also hoping that John will stay on another year and provide additional continuity.
Well, John. John is also retiring.
But he's considering staying on another year.
Oh, good. Okay, I'll have to call. Keep going with your speech.
We're gonna keep pressure on him. So don't worry, you're gonna be in good hands. And finally, I'd just like to say it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve on the Budget Committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Phil. So, so much.
Thank you, Phil.
Mr. Town Manager, has anyone else indicated they wish to speak?
There are no other comments.
Thank you. So at this point, Mr. Town Attorney, should, how should we proceed in terms of these amendments? You're muted.
You could do them one at a time or as a slate?
Well, why don't I, why don't I call on Councilmember Kumar, since he had a successful opportunity tonight? I'm sure Councilmember Heller will defer to him to
Absolutely.
To move the budget and move the two amendments. Is that acceptable, Councilor Heller?
When you say move the two amendments?
They'll move the budget and just.
We have to give a motion that we.
To adopt as amended.
Just to make it, to, just so we can try to stay on schedule.
Okay, let me go first. So, motion to adopt ordinance, no. No, I motioned to adopt the town of Somerset fiscal year, right? I don't think it's the ordinance, Ron, right? It is to adopt the budget. Is that correct?
Correct, which is, which is adopted by uncodified ordinance.
So I motioned to adopt the town of Somerset fiscal year 2023 budget and tax rate as submitted by Mayor Slaven for the Somerset Charter, Section 8341, amended as such. You know, move, update the stormwater line item by reducing the fiscal year 23 amount by 150K. Reducing fiscal year 24 and previous, following years amounts by two zero. And amend the Special Capital Fund line with an addition of 150K to fiscal year 23. And in addition of, someone will have to help me with the exact figure, the reduced stormwater amounts from fiscal year 24 and beyond.
Matt can give you, Matt can give you.
And then to add, is there a line? Is there a baseball line in the budget already?
Yes. Okay. So batting cage and we'll, and we'll give the credit to Councilor Heller.
As, as, as.
You're just.
Add $2,000 to the baseball line for fiscal year 23.
Batting cage.
Batting cage.
Needs the batting cage.
Ball batting cage line to focus clear.
Would. Going to oppose this as it stands.
Would you, I know I'm not a council member, but would you consider?
No, let's, let's.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Let's. So that's. Let him make his motion and then you can second, then you can discuss it.
Yeah, exactly. We are not gonna, we are not. Yeah.
Okay, fine. So, so now, Councilor Barr, do you want to try to amend, make an amendment?
By deleting the amendment proposed by Councilmember Kumar to delete funds from the stormwater line items for 23 and 24. The reason is that.
Okay, wait a minute. Is there a second on that?
On what is?
Okay, so, so let me.
Wait, wait, Mayor Slaven, I think I made a motion that we seconded it. Now we are discussing it. I think it would be good to hear from Councilmember Barr.
No, 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 he's, but he's making.
No, but let him, let him comment on this.
Okay, right, hold on, hold on.
We'll make another motion.
So, Councilor Mark?
Yeah.
Make your motion and then tell us the reason, and then we'll see if anybody seconds it.
Sure, yeah. The amounts that we established at the work session of 300,000 for 23 and 200,000 for the following years are the amounts that are the best estimates what's needed to manage the stormwater mitigation problems in town. They're only estimates, they're only markers, that's all. If we move them to a special capital fund, we are in fact subtracting from those stormwater funds. And we're saying to the Stormwater Committee, we don't consider your recommendations to be that important. We've got to put them into the other fund and we'll spend them on other things like the pool, perhaps. Now, I don't see that that is the right thing to do. I think we should absolutely establish what is needed for stormwater along the line. The only funds really that matter are 2023. We will be looking separately at the subsequent year budgets in subsequent years. I think we can use the Special Capital Fund among the stormwater funds, as I've discussed in email. But we need to send a strong signal to our residents and to the stormwater community that we take this seriously. By moving money out of the stormwater budget, we're doing exactly the reverse. We need to signal we take stormwater seriously. We're putting this money here. I don't think it's gonna cost us that. I think that there'll be grants that we will receive. I think we should also expect residents to pay some of it. But I think we should establish these numbers reflect, because that is what it's gonna cost us overall.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second to the motion? Councilor Circo, Council President Circo seconded. So now, discussion on the motion to amend the budget to how it was originally introduced. Regarding. Yeah. So is there, is there discussion on the amendment to the, to the original motion?
If I can lead the discussion here.
Go for it.
Someone, I can't recall who talked about issues with committing the funds towards this stormwater mitigation. But that's not what we're doing here. This is just budgeting. This is our plan based on inputs from our committees or other inputs that come to us on the council. I think that as the year proceeds, if we don't receive more definition or actionable opportunities for stormwater mitigation, it's of no consequence where the money is located, whether it's the stormwater mitigation line or a special capital line. We can apply it where we need it to, if it's someplace else. So I, my preference is to, for budgetary purposes, put the money in the stormwater mitigation line, 68104.
Even, Robin, you're effectively admitting that you want it in this line, not for budgetary purposes. You're effectively admitting that this is for political signaling purposes. If we follow a process, because we don't know how much it will cost, we put it in a line that it's not attributed to it, because we don't know how much it will cost. We have committed a 15-month process. We have a whole report. We are all, we have all voted to amend the code for stormwater. We have a phenomenal townwide commitment to solve this issue. Once we have specific figures, which by the way, we are doing for roads, which we're doing for almost every other infrastructure process, we're saying we're gonna budget these master plans. Once we have those figures, then we will look at how much we actually need to spend. We need to apply that same discipline and logic to stormwater. So this is not a signal of not commitment. This is actually the way budget processes need to go. And since we have applied it to almost everything else, as I said during the process, as you know, this is not new. I mentioned this during the process, we need to apply it to the stormwater. And we can lead our town. We can assure our town that once we have those specific figures. By the way, right now, the Stormwater Committee is proposing a subsidy program. I do not think the town is united on a subsidy program. We need a lot of discussion on the specifics of how we spend this money later on the dollar amount. Like, just the principles on which we will intervene are still being debated. So all we have achieved up to this point is that we have granular understanding of the severity of this problem, more than we did a year ago, more than we did two years ago. But we do not have the specific dollar figures that are needed to address the problem. And this is about that. This is about the budget, about the specific dollar figures. We have been smart that we created a special capital fund line. We did it for these reasons. We put the money there. As the time goes on and we nail down those specific figures, as Robin knows, I have committed. We all need to work on that. We need to figure out exactly what those, what the principles of the interventions are, what the dollar figures are. And then we have to come back to a council and say, okay, let's extract that amount from the Special Capital Fund and put it towards this objective. We will need to do that for roads. We will need to do that for every other intervention, which is how we've organized the budget. So.
Kabir, can I get a word in?
This is not a signal that stormwater is not important. Come on. We are all totally committed. We have amended the code. We've run a company process.
Kabir, can I get a word in?
Okay, let's, let's say, Councilor Barr talk.
A budget is a political document. It is a statement of our priorities. That exactly is a political document. 300,000 this year is the best estimate of what we can spend on stormwater mitigation.
You're in an estimate we have. Absolute vapor, Robin. We don't know what it will cost us. And we waited for the report amount, and it doesn't say what it would cost us.
I have shared that figure with the Stormwater Committee, these figures with the Stormwater Committee. I have not seen any argument against it. It is exactly a political signal that we consider stormwater important. Moving money to the Special Capital Project is removing that signal. I think we need the signal that we, that stormwater is important. That's why it should stay there.
As a council, go ahead, go ahead.
I think this council is 100% committed to stormwater management. Absolutely. I don't think that's even up for debate. We are committed.
And the town knows.
And I think the town knows that. But I think Kabir is right in how, and how we, and how, and how we out, you know, look at this money. I think we'll, we'll spend what we need to spend when we have, when we have a proposal. And I think you're right, Kabir, that I don't, I don't know about how this town is gonna react to the supplements to people, you know, the grants, whatever it is, who have, who have already done their mitigation. But that's, that's a conversation we'll have. But I think, I think it needs to be said loud and clearly and heard that we are 100% committed to this.
Debbie, we're sending the wrong signal then. If we're taking money out of the line and putting it in a special capital project, we're saying we're not committed to stormwater. That is the signal.
Oh, we are saying.
It's a statement of our priorities. If we take money out of the stormwater line, we're saying it's not a priority.
This is what we, we are committed. We need to go through a process and identify the specific figures. We may end up spending more than $300,000 in fiscal year 20. Let me be 100% clear here. We need to come up with what the specific interventions are, and then we need to do them.
With, right, that, that's.
And say, this is it.
On that, I agree with you. We're not gonna spend that $300,000 until we know what the specific investments, interventions are. And if.
Of intervention. This standard has been applied to every piece of intervention in town, every piece of intervention.
Excuse me, Kabir, but I don't recall seeing like in, an estimate or a work package that explained what we're gonna spend $110,000 on road resurfacing in fiscal year 23. It's just an estimate.
Those are master plans, as Miss former town manager. I'm sorry, you can pick it up from the town manager, but I would trust the master plan estimates of what it cost us to conduct studies to, to look at master plans. I mean, you know, so let's not, be a master plan, as a former town manager, to figure out the figures that we would need for road intervention. We don't have anything equivalent for stormwater, nothing close to that.
Discussion on roads is two years down the line.
More.
Talking about really at the moment is $300,000 for stormwater in fiscal year 23. That's what we're voting on.
And, and Robin, just to be, just to be clear, I'm proposing we leave some money in the stormwater line, because I do strongly believe we will spend some money.
You're halving the amount of money in the stormwater line and moving it to some, to an area where it can be applied to other projects. What I'm saying is keep the money in the stormwater line. We will move it to the other projects if we can't spend the money on stormwater. That's right.
Over the last year, Debbie has said we need to be fiscally responsible, a number of times. This is what this means. It means we have to run a process. We need to be thoughtful. We cannot just.
So you're, are you accusing me of being thoughtless at the moment?
No, let's, let's, everyone, let's, let's calm down. I think.
Is there further discussion?
Heard a lot of agreement.
Is there further discussion on the amendment? But I think everyone, I think everyone has made their views now. Is there further discussion on the amendment?
I would appreciate Steve's summarizing comments. Go ahead, Steve.
My summarizing comments, I think that we are in absolute agreement on the objective. I've heard that from everyone here and Shannon in other meetings. The value, the value of stormwater management and the importance of this town putting some financial resources behind taking actions. I see this more as a question of what are the appropriate logistics of the budgeting process to enable us to most effectively proceed? At the end of the day, quite frankly, though, I don't think it matters that much where the money is placed. I, I think we, we share the visions. I think we'll be able to execute.
I, I agree with you. I agree with you.
But I also think it's important to note that.
Okay, is there further?
Just because we have money in that budget line doesn't mean we're going to be spending money frivolously or without, without proper process before it actually gets obligated or committed or obligated.
The size of the dollars amount proposed behooves us to be extra, extra careful and disciplined in this process. It is really, really important. And so I, as someone said, this is not 100 bucks. I think it was fair. You know, this is significant amounts of money. So I, I assure you, you know, I, I think my points are very clear. And, you know, I think my commitment to this issue is very clear. I think my commitment to the budget process, I sincerely hope, is very clear. So I'm coming from that point of view, and I hope you would really consider this before we move forward.
Okay, well, thank you. Is there further? I think you've all made very thoughtful and meaningful comments on this amendment. So if there are no further comments, all those in favor of the amendment?
This is the.
Which amendment?
This is the amendment that Councilor Barr made to reverse the numbers back to the original as introduced.
Just for the stormwater piece, just to be.
Yeah, not, right, right. This is just the, so all those in favor of the amendment? Hi. I see Circo and Barr in favor. All those opposed. I see Kumar and Heller. So when, when there's a tie, I get to bring the tie. And I'm voting in favor of the amendment. So now, now what's on the table is the budget as amended originally. Okay, it's, it's the budget minus the one amendment on stormwater management, but including the amendment on the batting cage. Is there further discussion on the budget with that one amendment?
And, and Mr. Mayor, may I remind the council that the charter provides that the budget ordinance needs to be adopted by a favorable vote, favorable vote of at least three members of the council. So we will need three council members to vote on this motion to pass it.
Oh, is that right?
Yes.
Interesting. Okay.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Hi. What are we voting? I don't understand.
You're voting on the budget. At least. Vires, at least three members to vote. The mayor can't break the tie.
Just vote on that with you?
No, that was just the amendment that we voted on. So this is the whole budget now that we're voting on.
So if you, if you.
It's the same. Vote now, but applied to the whole budget.
No, what, what we voted on last time.
Vote on, this is the vote on the budget.
That, I think, Mr. Mayor, uh, I, I think right now that Robin's amendment to, to Kabir's amendment passed. So now you are voting for the amendment, the only remaining amendment that Councilmember Kumar made, which is the.
No, he's, no, no.
No, we, we are voting on.
Budget as, we're voting on the budget as amended. And budget as amended, hold, hold on, hold on, hold on. The budget as amended is the original budget with the one amendment on the batting cage. Because Councilor Barr's amendment that passed reversed the original motion. Okay, isn't that correct, Mr. Town Attorney?
Councilmember Kumar's amendments were amended by Councilmember Barr. Barr's motion to revert the stormwater drainage line item back to the original proposal.
So. Let me say something.
Correct. So it's the, it's the amended, the twice amended budget.
But just to be clear, we were always voting on the budget as amended. We were not.
No, you are, no, wait a minute.
Always voting on the budget.
Wait a minute. Hold on a second. The, you voted on the budget as amended. That was your motion. It was seconded. Then Councilmember Barr made an amendment to that motion, which I have the capacity to vote on. Doesn't require. Okay, so now what's on the table is the budget as twice amended. Which, 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 which what it is, is the budget that was introduced with one amendment, which is on the batting cage. And, and in order to pass that, it requires at least three votes. And if we don't get three votes tonight, then we have to call another meeting when Councilmember Ovac is back in town. So that, so, so that's, that's what's on the table. Is there further discussion on the motion to approve the budget as amended?
I'd just like to say, yeah, if, if we need to call a special meeting, that, that's fine. Nobody should feel pressured here.
Yeah, you don't need to feel pressured. If you, you, you vote your conscience. So, so is there further discussion? I think the town manager might ask a question.
Yeah, I, I, the, the, thank you for clarifying that. The reason I was asking is because, um, we did get a quote for pool deck repairs that is beyond what our budgeted amount is. And so, um, I did just want to raise that before you consider.
But, but, okay, but that, that's irrelevant now. That should have been brought up before we're at this point.
Yeah, I, I did, but I guess it got lost in the shuffle.
Well, but.
Try, I remember.
It's in the amendment.
At this point, at this point, is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing now, all those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed?
I, I'm really not sure what I'm voting for. I'm so sorry.
You're voting on the budget, you're voting on the budget with one amendment, which does not include the amendment switching to stormwater.
Trapped in this process because as you know, I invested a lot of time and energy on.
You're not, you're not being trapped. You had the opportunity. You made your, you made your arguments and.
You know.
So how?
As, as always, in a way that I don't particularly support.
Yeah, are, how are you, are you, are you, are you, which way are you voting?
I don't know what I'm voting for because I thought we were voting.
You're voting.
Originally.
You're voting on the budget with, which was originally introduced with a, with one amendment on the batting cage to add money for a batting cage line. So you can vote yes, no, or you can abstain. So which one do you want to do?
I would like to abstain because I don't support.
Okay, okay, thank you. Next item is public hearing motion to consider adoption of the charter amendment to lower the eligible voting age from eighteen to sixteen for municipal elections in the town of Somerset. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, uh, this was introduced, um, in March, I believe. Um, in, in order to, is that right? Or was it introduced last month? I'm sorry, my timeline's off. In any case, we introduced this. It's now up for, uh, a vote for adoption. Um, I will note that, uh, count, two council members have both written articles about this in the Town Journal. Um, I think we've, uh, discussed this in open, open session a couple of times in work, work sessions. Um, and that's, that's really the su- summary. Uh, no, no specific, uh, comments at this time um, from residents. Uh, so I'll turn it back over to you, Mr.
Okay, thank you. Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
Sorry, man, you said no comments? I'm I'm surprised at the lack of comments. Um, but, um, thank you. Uh, I've, I have no questions then.
Thank you, Councilor Barr.
There was actually one comment from Ambolden, wasn't there? And maybe that went to the list or not to you, I don't know.
Um, I, I didn't, yeah, I, I didn't receive that email. Um.
Anyway, she supported it. It was basically.
I'm not, yeah, I, I, no, no, no comments came in at least directly to me, um, for supplemental, so.
Okay, did you have any other questions?
Um, no, I mean, I support it.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Heller.
Okay, I am not in favor of this, but I want to be clear about one thing. And that is, I am very much in favor of youth engagement, in civic youth engagement, of engaging our teens to, you know, to interact with us, to do civic programming that encourages them to think about future elections and voting. I don't think the town of Somerset should be the place where they, where they try that on. And I think I can safely say that I am the only one on this council that actually worked with students of this age, that my whole career has been working with kids. All right. And I know kids and I know the way they operate. Now, I've worked everywhere from middle school through college. Okay, I know, Robin, you've got a PhD in psychology. I think you know all about the brain. And, um, I can say for sure, even the kids in college, that their brains are not fully developed. It was a wild time when I ran a dormitory of four hundred young men that were between the ages of eighteen and twenty. It was a great time. Anyway, I can, but putting that aside, I think we are misguided to, to do this. First of all, we don't have town engagement on this. We don't. Now, some of us, I have definitely gotten, people have, have voted for it, that, that have expressed desire for it, and those have not. Okay, but not in enough numbers that, that should get us to.
Okay, Councilor Heller, you'll be able to debate.
Oh, we're not debating. Okay, I am just not in favor of this. I will go on.
So right now, it's really your opportunity to ask clarifying questions.
Clarifying questions. Okay, here's my clarifying questions. What do you really, okay, here's my clarifying question to all of you.
Okay.
What exactly is your desired outcome for this, for giving sixteen?
That you can, that's part of the debate. Do you have any specific questions to the town attorney or the town manager about the impact or the, any input or anything? You have any, you have any questions, right? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kumar.
No questions.
Okay, just wondering if the rest of the council members, Robin and Steve are voting because this is also politically expedient. I don't know. Now, I'm wondering if everything is voted on.
You can debate that.
Genuinely believe.
You can debate that when we get there. Okay, Mr. Town Manager, is any resident or guest wish, indicating wish to speak on this?
No.
Not, because I see constituents that are interested in this. They don't, they, they they don't wish to speak. Okay, thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I can make a motion.
Okay. And then, and then you can all get on the record, Councilmember Kumar.
Okay.
This is your night of making motions.
I see that. Motion to adopt, uh, charter amendment to lower the eligible, eligible voting age from eighteen to sixteen for municipal elections in the town of Somerset.
Okay, is there a second?
One second.
Okay, Barr, a second. Okay. So now, um, perhaps, I, since you all want to make a statement, I'll, I'll just call on each of you. And then, and then after that, it can be a free for all. Council President Circo.
Two comments. Well, three comments. First, I'm excited to, I, I address a question of, of voting. I think that's the heart of democracy. So I'm glad this is brought before us. Um, I kind of wish that there, we'd had a town forum to discuss in greater depth and get more feedback from residents. I, more broadly than this question, I do not believe that any council members in Somerset are voting on this or other topics just for political expediency. I think that I have confidence that everyone is, is weighing the merits and making their own assessments as professionally and honestly as they can. And I must say, I've, I am, um, influenced strongly by Debbie's comments. I, I've not heard significant reasons to change the voting age. I have not heard significant engagement from the town to lower the voting age. And I'm not sure of the, of, that the benefits outweigh the costs and impacts. That's it. Robin?
Thank you, Councilmember Barr.
Sure. Okay, well, um, I'm going to give you a little bit of, um, psychology or the, uh, the brain doesn't mature until about the age of twenty-five. And as we get older, actually, the first declines of the brain are happening around your early thirties. Um, and the brain continues to decline gradually, um, into your sixties and seventies when it tends to fall much more than that later on. So there, there isn't, you know, a period more than about three years in which you can say the brain is at maximum capacity. And that, that's the time when athletes are supreme, you know, when you get these wonderful performances. That's also these days when chess champions are at their best. That's all true. That's true. Have nothing to do with vote. I mean, the point is that we're all participating in our society. We're all thinking about who our leaders are, who our council people are. We all need to be able to express ourselves in the ballot about those people. And so, um, it seems entirely reasonable that we should extend the voting age down to sixteen to allow sixteen-year-olds to do that. Um, they are participants in our society already. They are users of our pool. They're use their tennis courts. They're riding their bikes. They're learning to drive on our roads. They're doing all those different things. And so therefore, we should allow sixteen-year-olds to participate in our civic institution of voting in town.
Thank you, Robin. Debbie?
Um.
Anything further?
Yes, our sixteen-year-olds do not pay taxes in this community. And I don't know that I would want them voting on, on, and on our, on our taxes, on, uh, on, really the way to govern our town, because one of the things we know about sixteen-year-olds is that they're very clubby. And if your best friend is, has, has the thought, that's what they're going to do too. And that's when they're going to run around like little mice and get everyone to vote for something that they, that they want, that they not, haven't necessarily thought through. We are adults. That's our job. Our job is to lead our children and, and, and to lead the town. And asking children to make the decisions that adults should be making is not fair nor right. And I, and I suspect that in the end, we'll have some bad decisions made in this town. And I, I think it's not, I think it's not responsible of us to give sixteen-year-olds a vote. I think we're just not being responsible. I love sixteen-year-olds. I love kids. You know, you ask some kids in this town and they've been, they've, they've had to have conversations with me as they walk down the street and I hear them dissing this one or that one. You know, I, I'm involved with kids. I, 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 I've worked that, they, they've been my life's work. They don't belong voting at sixteen. And, and another point is, take a look around the country. Why is, why aren't sixteen-year-olds voting nationally? Okay, why hasn't been changed to that? The reason we changed it from twenty-one to eighteen, because eighteen-year-olds went to war. Okay, and could be drafted into the army. So I really implore you not to vote for this. It's just not appropriate. We should engage our teens. We should set up civic programming. We should help them and help them make choices. We have a lot of smart people in this neighborhood and we can engage them in other ways.
Actually, the, the, this about voting nationally, it's an international issue. This, it's.
Let's let, let's let, uh, Councilmember Kumar talk before you all debate each other. But before I call on Councilmember Kumar, I do want to say, Councilor Heller, that everybody's pretty clubby around here.
Yes.
So I reject that. And I think everybody knows that I've been a huge advocate for this for a long time.
I know you, I know you have been.
And I applaud, I applaud Councilmember, I think Councilor Kumar was the author of, of the, uh, legislation. But anyway, Councilor Kumar, your turn.
Well, you know, I think this sort of civic engagement is a crisis across all age groups. If you know that, very few people actually vote in elections. It's true even in, in the town of Somerset, right? I think the only election that saw a lot of people come out was the one, uh, year before last. Uh, but in all previous years, it's been very few handful of people. I learned recently that only thirty-five percent of New York City's population votes in the mayoral election. That's crazy. So we have this broad base, I think, challenge across all age groups. And in fact, the older adults seem to be, sort of the middle-aged, seem to be less engaged. And then you have this group that is very motivated, that is, you know, um, passionate about the direction of the communities that they live in, that are interested in solving problems in creative ways that seem to be outside the political process. And so, you know, to the extent that we can bring them in, it, I feel it, it is not about them as much as it is about energizing the entire process. And, and so in that sense, it's, I think, very sensible, I think, to look at this and look at it very seriously. So the second thing I would say, you know, it was me and I think Steve proposed this because it was originally brought to our attention by someone on the other end of the age spectrum, was a town resident. That to me was very noteworthy, uh, that this was the person that who brought it. It wasn't a young person who brought that to our attention. It's Lucy Freeman on a walk. And then I thought it was really impressive to see, uh, I think it was Amalia Levitin who actually conducted a survey. A number of residents across age groups responded in favor of Steve. So to your, to your point about engagement and feedback from the town, you know, I want to remind you that there are many issues where we don't even have that input. Uh, I think there's been already significant input, uh, I think, um. And I think residents have also written on the list serve in support of this. So you know, we, it's brought to our attention by someone completely on the other end of the age spectrum. It wasn't some young person clamoring for, hey, give me more. You know, we, it's brought to our attention by someone completely on the other end of the age spectrum, it wasn't some young person clamoring for, hey, give me more. Rights, and it was then kind of led by a young resident who was able to galvanize interest and support across the age group. I think that's very noteworthy to me, I think that made a big difference. Terms of how I was thinking about it, even though on the whole, at the highest level, I was excited. And then, the third thing I would say is, you know, please remember, we are not the first town to look at this. And a number of towns have been looking at it and have been reporting, you know, a, a sort of a favorable. Reality where they have increased overall civic participation because now they have energized the younger people in town. Um, you know, and they have, uh, potentially changed the trajectory of civic participation in the town, in their towns period. Moving forward, so, you know, I, I, I think I mentioned this when this was originally brought up in our working session, that there's a lot of favorable data coming out of. The experiments other towns have already done, so. For all of those reasons, I am in full support of this, I think this will be a tremendous boon for our town, I remember for our town. You know, our specific town, our specific residents, and the people in our town, I think this would be phenomenal. Um, I think it will increase civic participation, I think we will energize our young people, I think it will bring creative ideas to our problems. And I'm really looking forward to that.
I have a question. Ken, I don't know how to do this legally, but I think we need to table this, I think we need to have a town referendum. I don't think we should.
You can, you can make, you can make a motion to table.
I make a motion to table this.
Is there a second?
I second it, I like that idea.
Okay, is there discussion?
I'll, I'll eat it off.
As I, as I. Make a comment as well that may aid the council.
Of course.
An interesting issue is presented tonight, which I hadn't thought of before, and that's whether the mayor can break a tie on a charter amendment. So, the town charter provides that charter amendments are undertaken according to the provisions of state law. State law provides that, I'll quote section four, three, or four of the local government article. Charter amendments, I'm going to paraphrase now, are adopted by resolution and then quote. By a majority of all the individuals elected to the legislative body, end quote. The phrase makes me question whether the mayor can break a tie because, you know, the mayor may or may not be a member of the legislative body.
Okay, well, based on that, based on that, I would like to urge the council to, um. Approve tabling this because when there are five members present at the next meeting, it can be taken off the table. And, and perhaps, perhaps, uh, someone should amend this motion to make it to a time certain.
What does that mean?
So you can table it until a certain, a, a future meeting. Because, but if you table it without any kind of timeline, at any time, it can be taken off the table. By a majority vote, okay? So I would suggest that you table it to a time certain, like next month. And there are five people present.
Can I, I, there won't be five people present next month, I won't be here, okay?
Okay, well, table it, then table it to, to the, uh, August meeting.
Okay, because I, I'm just wondering if.
Okay, are you willing to amend your motion to table it to the August meeting?
I am willing to amend that, yes.
Okay, so Council President Circo, you accept that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so now it's the discussion on whether to table this until the August council meeting. Is there further discussion on that?
I'd like to say one thing about that, is it possible, yes, let's table it, and then let's bring it back to a work session. Because one of the things I would like to explore is, do we open this up to a town referendum, is that the kind of thing we can do?
Okay, we can, we, we can, we're, I'm sure the council president is happy to put that on the next work session agenda.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, did you have any further questions? Hearing none, all those, and, does everybody understand the motion?
Uh, we're tabling to August, right, if we approve the motion.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll, I'll table it to August.
All those opposed? Councilor Kumar, are you voting against?
Um, I would, I, let's.
Okay, okay, so it passed, thank you very much, the next, the next and final item is the town manager's report.
Yes, um, I, I have, uh. Everything written down for you, so, um, in the interest of time, I, I won't take up too much of it, uh. Just to give you a quick update on the pool opening, um, they, they've been working down there, uh, doing pump work. Um, lifeguard trainings beginning this week, signed off on some small repairs, um, there are. These larger repairs that, um, maybe I'll bring to the work session, we'll have to amend the budget, I think at this point, um. The early morning swim sign up that I worked with, um, Councilmember Heller and the pool committee chair Zaf on, I think. Worked quite well, um, so, um, I think that system was a success, um. Let's see, uh, I.
I.
Sorry.
Ho- hold on, you'll get a chance to ask questions, please continue briefly with your report.
Yeah, so, um, uh, the, uh, I am meeting to, uh, allow us to do, uh, hybrid meetings starting in September with, uh. Montgomery and Spill Cable has, um, ordered the equipment for us. Um, did want to flag that we're pushing the ceremony for, uh, council member, former council president Shaw. Uh, her dedication ceremony to Saturday, June eleventh, um, I, uh. Uh. The, uh, did have a kickoff meeting with the website vendor and the communications committee. Um, so we are going to have our next meeting, uh, in two, two or three weeks. Um, to go over preliminary designs for the homepage and, uh, and some of the other pages. Um, I'll leave it there because I know it's getting late, but happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you, Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you very much, Matt.
Thank you, Councilor Barr.
Do you want to update us very briefly on how the website's going, redesign is going?
Yeah, so, um, we had a kickoff, we had a kickoff meeting with the communications committee and went through, um, ba- basically. Similarly, a questionnaire that I had filled out with some of their feedback. Um, going over some of the things that we liked on other websites, um, elements that we could easily add to ours, et cetera. So at this point, they're designing, essentially, they're going to give us a, a PDF of what our homepage and some of the other main pages are going to look like. Then we'll give them feedback, that's the section where things either will. You know, will speed up the process or where we can get bogged down, just depending on how much back and forth we go based on that. Once we give that the okay, that's when they really begin to transfer over the data and the information and, um, get a website up and running.
Thank you.
Councilor Heller?
I'm good.
And Councilmember Kumar?
Matt, uh, when will be the dry run opening for the pool?
Um, we, we are, so they are doing lifeguard training this week, next week we'll do, um, basically, uh, uh. Well, we're, uh, Councilmember Heller and I had even talked about going down there, meeting with the lifeguards about running everything, turning everything on, all that. We've done, um, cleaning, small repairs, um, testing all that out, but, um. So basically, Wed- Wednesday of next week, we'll, we'll, we'll go down there and talk to the lifeguards and get them ready.
Okay, uh, if, if, if you do it on Tuesday, I can, I could join you, I would love to join you guys, if that's possible.
What, what time do they do it, I, Tuesday afternoons I volunteer, I do, I, I'm, I'm like. X out, three o'clock on.
We could do it in the first half of the day, around.
I'll, uh, I'll, I'll shoot an email and CC, CC the two of you with, um, Sandesh or Jerry and, um, we'll find a mutually agreeable time. Early, early to mid next week.
Great, thank you.
Okay, everyone, just thank you for a great meeting, is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we will see you on, remember, the work session was scheduled for Monday, May sixteenth at five thirty. Right, see you then.
Thank you all very much.
Bye.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Bye.